I'm just gonna leave it recording as well.
Marty, can you confirm you hear me okay?
I can hear you Rob.
Thanks Zach.
Rob, I'm not gonna be in the meeting, I'm going to get out and Rachel Davis will be the host here shortly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, y'all have a good meeting.
Hey Melissa, I'm on if you want to make me a co-host.
Done.
Thank you.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveris, can you hear me okay?
Madam Chair, yes, this is Jess McNeely, hear you perfectly fine, how do you hear me?
Okay, and I hear you as well, I'm again just doing our pre-meeting sound check, so I think we're good to go. So, we'll start promptly at four.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I was curious, is our quorum minimum six?
Um, okay, good evening everyone, Commissioner Wilson. For a meeting, for the actual planning and zoning hearing, it is six. But for the study session, we are not required to have a quorum. I do recognize that we do not have a quorum for the study session, but because we're not required to. It's four o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and start, Mr. McNeely, if you could.
Excellent.
Absolutely, thank you Madam Chair, I am looking through our attendees right now and trying to figure out. I believe that we are missing. The Vice Chair?
No, she just signed on.
Ah, okay.
My Vice Chair Burton just signed on, so we are still missing Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Williams.
Okay, okay, good to know. Alright, well, thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners. Welcome to your March Regular Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session. And, Chair Aunt Taveris, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna share my screen. So that we can see the study session agenda for today's meeting.
Yes, that would be helpful, thank you.
Okay, thanks, and this is just briefly, so Madam Chair, Commissioners. We'd like to kick off your study session today with the first items on it. That are applications that are currently scheduled for your public hearing next month, your regular public hearing on Wednesday, April 26th. So, as your study session, we will present to you what we know about the application. We have been working with these applicants for some time. In order to get all the submittals required by our zoning ordinance to get in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Public hearing and all of these applications have met that requirement. So, we're here to orient you to the case, see if you have any questions about the case, but I would like to remind you. That we really, that we cannot discuss the merits of a case, certainly can't discuss findings, anything would affect findings. On a case here at the study session, as this is just an agenda for study session discussion. We just had Commissioner Williams join us, so we're getting closer. So, Madam Chair, our first item, item number one here on your study session agenda is CUP 2247. It is a conditional use permit request for RVs as a permanent residence in the valley area. Actually, we've got two in a row here, CUP 2247 and the following case, CUP 22116 are both. Conditional use permits for recreational vehicles as permanent residents, both in the valley area. Zach Schwartz of our staff is managing both of these cases, so he will give a brief orientation to both of these. Zach, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. McNeely, good evening Commissioners. So, the first two cases are actually almost completely identical. Except for one is one lot to the south of the other, so we might be able to just knock out two birds, one stone. But the applicant is Lex Isham. And these are, as Mr. McNeely stated, both for CUPs for RVs. As permanent residences in the valley area. Specifically, it's Grand Canyon Subdivision Unit 10, so here's where Highway 64 and 180. Could come to a meeting here and here, all the yellow is the AR zone, so. That, right here is where the applicant is looking to do one of their RVs as permanent residences. The parcel is currently vacant and there are some very rudimentary roads out in this area. The applicant basically is just looking to permanently place their Airstream on the property. As their residence and they would put in a septic system here. I think it's a pretty simple case, but if there are any items that I can research for you for the analysis. Or if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them.
I have one quick question.
Yes, go ahead Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, I noticed that both these applications are from the same person and both of them are listed as for residence. I'm not clear why they would be living in two different places simultaneously.
Sure, so Commissioner Wilson, I mean, I wouldn't think of it any differently than. A person can own two different homes in two different areas. It's possible that they'd be looking to do some kind of short-term rental situation, I do want to make clear though that. The use for short-term rental is something that's out of the commission's purview for the RV as the permanent residence, so. I'm not quite sure all of the background, but that could possibly be it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, you're unmuted, do you have a question?
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, you're fine, you're fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, I'm not seeing any other questions, so let's go ahead and bump to the next one.
Okay, Madam Chair, so this case is. From the same applicant and it's the same exact situation, except for it's one parcel further south. So, rather than just go through the whole explanation again, I'll just ask if there's any. Comments, questions, anything that people would like, Commissioners would like to see for my analysis.
Alright, Mr. Schwartz not seeing any. Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and move to item number three on the study session, please.
Thank you Madam Chair, item three is CUP 2317 and DRO 2209. This is a conditional use permit request along with a DRO Design Review. For expansion of an existing self-service storage business. In commercial zoning, CG 10,000 zoning in the Mount Air area. Bob Short is managing this project, so Bob has some slides put together that he can share with you. To orient you to the project, so Bob, if you want to go ahead and share your screen, you can do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely, it appears that I haven't been a co-host. A co-host before I can share my screen.
So.
You got it Bob.
Thanks Melissa.
Alright, thanks Melissa. Okay, thank you, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this case is Mount Air Self-Storage. It's an expansion of this self-storage that is already there in Mount Air. And the owner is Candy Connections of Flagstaff. Applicant is Christine Laguna of Civil Design and Engineering of Flagstaff and the zoning is CG 10,000. And the request is conditional use permit to expand the self-storage business. And also designer review overlay, DRO case for commercial development. And that includes design of the site. Landscaping, the building design and materials and colors. In this case, new lighting and signage are not proposed. So, this is the city map showing the subject property, it is in the Mount Air area, you can see Mount Air down here, Kachina over here. This is Mount Air Road coming out, and this is that CG 10,000 area right there. And this is the subject property, again, Mount Air Road and Osage, and this is where you get onto the subject property right now, they have. You can see these existing storage units and they have some outdoor RV parking right here, RV storage, I should say. And this is their site plan, so again, this is existing down here where it's kind of dotted lines around it. And everything in gray pretty much is what they're proposing at this point, it is done in three phases. And down here is the key to that, I won't point those out right now, but. They're looking at three different phases, so these are the new storage units. Some of them will be indoor, I believe would be indoor RV storage. And there's just a variety of things going on here, this is another big maintenance warehouse right here. This is a landscape plan, they actually have two parts of landscape plan. And we'll, of course, talk more about that next month when you guys hear this case. And these are the elevations of the buildings. This is, you know, basically your basic greens and tans that. That match the, you know, natural forest in this area, kind of a common color used in these. It's also the color of the existing storage units on the property. This is the front and I believe this is the back or another side. Anyway, with that, I'll take any questions from the Commission.
Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Short, I'm curious, you mentioned that there's no changes proposed for the signage or lighting. Are the signage and lighting currently in compliance with current code?
I haven't had a chance to go look at it, Commissioner Wilson. So, I'll check that out as I do the research on this project, but that's my understanding that it is in compliance with current code. And I will double-check on the lighting because that, this is a lot of storage units that lighting, so I'll make sure that the applicant is clear about that. If not, we will get a lighting plan from them and some cut sheets to show what kind of lighting they're proposing.
And the second question is, what's the noticing that's been done with respect to this proposed CUP? Can you tell me what distance we went or how many people were notified or any of that?
I believe it was the minimum of 300 feet. But I'd have to check on that, the reason for that is it's been here for a long time, I think it's been here since the early 2000s. And the neighborhood is, you know, is kind of used to this use, so I believe it's 300 feet, there are quite a few properties if you look back, go back. If you go back, you can see that if you go 300 feet, you're gonna get quite a few of these properties that are right around in this area. And I can look that up if you want, but probably not right at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Yes, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of a heads up, I'll be sending you an email. And requesting some time with you when you go out to post the property. I'm pretty familiar with this one from the previous CUP. So, I'll be interested in seeing how things look at this point in time before we go forward with this hearing, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, Mr. Short, I am not seeing any other questions, so Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and move to item four, please.
Thank you Madam Chair, the final item scheduled for public hearing next month is AM 2207. This is a request for a zoning ordinance text amendment, so this isn't associated with any, this isn't a land use. Decision being requested on any particular piece of property, it's just a requested text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And you can see on your study session agenda, the exact, the exact section of the zoning ordinance that's requesting. A text amendment, Bob will be managing this case, I see he's already sharing his screen, so Bob, why don't you go ahead and orient us to what's being requested here.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is a medical marijuana amendment, it's AM 22007. And the applicant in this case is Michael Piron, I hope I pronounced that right, he is with us right now, if you would. You know, if you have any questions for him, he is associated with the Green Pharma, which is. Right at the edge of the city limits, it's in the county, but right at the edge of the city limits on Highway 89 going north, it's in, it's in Donny Park. The request in this case is specifically a zoning ordinance text amendment to Section 3.12.1c. Point 3.1e to change the required closing time for medical marijuana dispensaries from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Now, as Mr. McNeely explained. This is, you know, this is a specific dispensary. Uh, this is, you know, this is a a specific dispensary, but this would apply to any dispensary in the county. Uh, in the purpose of it, this is really simplified. But uh, because there's a lot more information, the applicant has provided a lot more, um, you know, like narrative to this. And they've addressed the findings. Uh, but the purpose is to be consistent with the city of Flagstaff, which already has the ten PM closing time. And they've also provided information that many other jurisdictions in Arizona also have that ten PM closing time. So just simply. This is the proposed text amendment. So this is what it says right now. Basically, you mark out the eight and change it to a ten and that would be the uh, the extent of this. Uh, text amendment in the zoning ordinance. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Commissioner Best, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. How many more of these do we have in the county?
I don't have an exact count, Commissioner Best. Uh, does anyone else? Uh, do you know, Mr. McNeely or any other planners? I'm not.
Thanks, thanks, Bob, and and thanks, Commissioner Best. We aren't aware of um, of any other. Medical marijuana dispensaries uh, anywhere in the unincorporated county. And there's obviously a a good number of them in the city limits, but. Um, we're not aware that any other, that any others have gone through our our permit process under our zoning ordinance for this.
Thanks. Uh, I think one thing I'd be thinking about would be how this would affect neighborhoods. Uh, if it, if they went into other areas, it's got to be commercial property. So that helps. Uh, but that would be a question that I'd want to see addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. And interestingly, um. The fi- the findings for an amendment to the zoning ordinance are exactly the same findings as for a zone change. So that that last finding, it uh, does address neighborhoods. So I guess that would apply in this case to all neighborhoods where these might locate.
Uh, I think Commissioner Best, uh, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious, Mr. Short, um, this is saying medical marijuana dispensaries. Yet since uh, marijuana is now legal in the state of Arizona, are these medical marijuana dispensaries?
Uh, Commissioner Wilson, yes, they they are uh, medical marijuana dispensaries. So uh, so when this first, when medical marijuana was first legalized. In the state of Arizona, Coquigny County put together this section of the code that uh, basically addressed them. Provided regulations for medical marijuana. Uh, since then, we, as you know, recreational marijuana has been. Uh, approved in the state of Arizona. So my understanding about this particular um, facility. Is that they can sell both. However, uh. Under, if you have a medical marijuana card, you're able to buy apparently uh, a greater supply of marijuana and also. Different types of edibles, maybe stronger edibles than if you have um, just a recreational. Uh, operation. And the applicant is here. I did see him here a few minutes ago. He might be able to answer more of your questions on that if you have them. That's not sufficient.
Well, maybe at the next month, if we could just have a a definition of what it is specifically that we're talking about here. Um, I I would appreciate that. It'd be helpful. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. And I actually was going to ask that very same question if Commissioner Wilson had not asked it. So we're looking at proposed text amendment and we're specifically calling out medical marijuana dispensaries. On, and as as Commissioner Wilson rightly stated. Uh. Recreational marijuana dispensaries are now voter approved and legal in the state of Arizona. Would it be prudent to remove the word medical? From from this text as we're while we're doing this amendment?
Uh, Madam Chair, so the county has not, I mean, I in some counties, some jurisdictions have passed. Regulations for recreational marijuana. The county has not done that. This is what we have currently in our zoning ordinance and this is what the applicant is requesting to change what's currently in our zoning ordinance. There isn't anything that really, as far as I know, I mean, there's nothing that addresses recreational marijuana. So this. Would simply apply to medical marijuana and all of the regulations that we we have an entire section of our code that talks about this. This is, this is a portion of that. So so we're talking about in this case. Dispensaries and um, and not, this is medical marijuana dispensaries only, not recreational marijuana. It does not affect that.
So Bob, uh, this is, this is Jess McNeely, the staff as well. And if if I can help add a little bit to the conversation, when medical marijuana. Uh, was approved by the state of Arizona some years ago, there were some very specific requirements um, that came with um, with state legislation. And the counties at that time simply, simply put those same requirements into the zoning ordinance for medical marijuana facilities. Um, now that recreational has been approved, uh, recreational is an approved, i- is now. A approved use um, just as retail. We don't specify in the zoning ordinance. Um, uh, recreational marijuana. It it's not a separate land use, any different than any other retail. Um, and if I were to give an analogy, I would say our zoning ordinance likewise does not regulate liquor stores. If you look through our zoning ordinance, we don't list liquor store. Um, as a separate land use from regular retail. Uh, so uh, I I again, as an analogy, our zoning ordinance does not regulate. To hours of operation, um, does not regulate liquor stores in any way uh, different than any other retail. It's just a retail establishment. So currently under our zoning ordinance, a a uh, recreational um, uh. Marijuana retail operation is just retail, same as same as any other retail with no other parameters. We're having to deal with this. With these details because the zoning ordinance had these, these details um, in it. Uh, from from a number of years ago, when medical marijuana was added to the uh, added to the zoning ordinance as a separate use. Um, I hope that that helps the understanding of this being an identified separate use. And whereas whereas recreational is not identified as a separate use.
Okay, and and this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Dispensaries, it, one dispensary can sell both medical and recreational, correct?
Our understanding is yes, yes.
Okay, so, so. This could then just be a, I I'm I'm typing, talking hypothetically here. But this could just be considered a recreational marijuana dispensing facility. That happens to sell medical marijuana. And wouldn't that, wouldn't that get it out from underneath any kind of county um, regulations?
Uh, Madam Chair, as I, as I explained a little earlier, so medical marijuana is different. It, i- if if you have a medical marijuana card, you had a med- uh, have a medical condition and you have a card. Then you can buy a greater quantity of marijuana than you can under recreational marijuana, which is available to anyone, as you know.
Right.
Or you can also buy the, it's a substantially, you know, larger amount and also you can buy more, I I believe more and stronger edibles as well. So that's the difference. Uh, it it's available for only those people that have those cards and that portion would be able to stay open later.
Okay, um, I'm not sure I'm exactly clear on this, but but I'm good for today. Okay, my questions have been answered. Um, I'm going to go back. Uh, Commissioner Best, I think your hand was raised first.
Yeah, I think one question was answered. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and that was the hours. Apparently liquor stores. We do not control the hours of liquor stores. I was. Thinking maybe we should consider doing some sort of a approval like a CUP. To see if neighborhoods wanted to weigh in on hours. But since we're not doing that on liquor stores, uh. I, I don't think it makes as much sense. So I'm still still thinking about that one and uh, but I would just bring up the idea.
Okay.
We want neighborhood, uh, neighborhoods to be able to weigh in on this.
Okay, Commissioner Best, I'm going to go ahead. Our legal counsel has his hand raised. So we're going to go ahead and go to him. Mr. Garnes, please, please address the commission.
All right. Thanks, Madam Chair. Um, I think I just want to echo what Bob and Jess have said, just in the sense that. There is, even though, you know, marijuana as a whole is legal, both recreational and medical. There are clear differences between the two, the recreational and the medical. So I would just recommend. Keeping those delineations clear in any part of the zoning zoning ordinance uh, might be amended. Um, based again on things like the allowable quantities, the growing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The. The delineations between medical and recreational should be um, well laid out and preserved as much as we can. And I'll just leave my comments at that.
Okay, under understood, understood. Uh, Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes, I think uh, if you take a look in the chat box, uh, the applicant uh, has offered to um. Add some clarification to the discussion we've been having here. So just uh, wanted to point that out.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. And if the applicant would like to add clarification for the commission, please go ahead.
Thank you so much for giving me the chance to address the commission. Um, so when. A recreational marijuana was passed uh, back in December of twenty twenty, I'd reached out to the county and have an email with Melissa, Bob. William McNeely, uh, Zach Schwartz, all uh, requesting if there would be an an update to the current zoning ordinance regarding recreational marijuana. And I was informed that there would be no additional zoning ordinance and that the current ordinance would stand governing both bodies. I do agree with your legal counsel. Uh, you guys should update. It would be clearer and and better for the county and all involved. If you delineate the two, um, but most counties have made their overarching zoning ordinance for marijuana. The zoning ordinance for both types of marijuana and just delineate within if there are any differences between the two. Um, the the comments earlier were correct, where the difference between a recreational marijuana purchase and a medical marijuana purchase. Is the strength of the edible, the amount of concentrates they can purchase at one time and the amount of marijuana they can purchase at one time. Um, in some of those cases, it's double or triple, whether potency or the amount of concentrates or the amount of of actual smokable flower marijuana. Um, and then um, other items that were kind of unclear is that in the county, there's only three dispensaries. Two of them are in city limits. Uh, we're the only other. Um, there's no other uh, dispensaries north or northeast. Um, so that all residents who are, say, in Tubus City or up in that part of Arizona are all driving down. And after, you know, seven thirty, eight o'clock at night are now driving through town and then back again. Causing additional infrastructure, public safety issues and other infrastructure issues. So there there's a lot in the narrative that actually calls out and talks about what the benefits of doing this, who it's benefiting and how this addresses public safety and health. If you guys have any other additional questions that I might be able to help answer, I'd love to. Um, uh, and again, I I've been with this company. Since twenty fourteen, um, and that dispensary was opened a year prior.
Okay, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Perron. Commissioner Wilson.
Just one quick question. Um, what what are the current hours of operation? Since it sounds like retail sales, non-medical would be available, would they should be able to be open twenty-four seven?
We currently operate eight to eight and treat this ordinance as the ordinance that would govern recreational marijuana. Knowing that there's not an ordinance governing it and you could fall back on the retail, our line of work doesn't allow us those luxuries.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm not seeing, um, thank you, Mr. Perron for that additional information. And as we move into the hearing next uh, month, we will be able to take a look at the narrative and the things that you refer to. So. Thank you for that heads up. And with that, I'm not seeing any other questions, Mr. McNeely. So we can go to the. Uh, administrative renewals for next month.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I am sharing my screen again so that everyone can see the administrative renewals for next month. Um, we have three conditional use permit administrative renewals uh, that we are, that we are currently working with. Uh, one of which is going to be very hard to get to the site because of, because of our um, heavy snow winter. Uh, but are there any questions uh, from anyone on the commission? On any, on any of these three administrative renewals?
Uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I do not have any questions on the renewals and I'm not seeing that the other commissioners do either. So with that, let's go ahead and move to Community Development Department update, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. On our department update, um, item one, uh, recurring item, we always like to remind you all and and any of the public. On the meeting that the county is um, is still partner in the Route sixty-six Brownfields EPA grant. Uh, we've seen some, some great success uh, for some property owners in in making use of this grant. So always want to put this out there and see if there are any questions. Um, and if anyone on the meeting is interested, they can always contact. Melissa Shaw on our staff and um, get some assistance in um, in applying for that grant. Any questions, Madam Chair or Commissioners on item one?
Not seeing any. Please go to two.
Okay, also recurring, uh, item two is reminding you that we continue to work with the city of Flagstaff on the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update. Um, we are having active uh, workshops. Um, I believe Melissa had a couple of those yesterday at the Flagstaff Aquaplex and we have. Uh, some some additional ones here in the near future. And if anyone has any questions, you could certainly ask us any questions. Melissa, if you had anything you'd like to add about any of the upcoming activities with the regional plan, go ahead.
Thank you, Jess and Commissioners. I would just like to encourage anyone um, who is. Listening in now to join those workshops and I can put a link to a flyer in the chat, but um. These are initial round of workshops to begin the scenario planning process. There will be. Many other opportunities to follow up to these. Um, so if you're not able to join with this round, there'll be opportunities for future workshops. That's all I had, Jess. I'll put the link in the chat.
Thank you. Um, okay, so Madam Chair, going on to the next item, item three. Um, as you all know, uh, Community Development Staff, as being led by Melissa Shaw. Has initiated our tenure update to the County Comprehensive Plan. We're calling that Envision twenty forty-five. We've even got some graphics to use now. For our branding. Um, are, we most recently held a Board of Supervisors uh, public hearing. Uh, yesterday on the Public Participation Plan to get approval of the Public Participation Plan. A couple of the board members wanted some more detail in that Public Participation Plan. So staff is back to doing some updates of the Public Participation Plan. And we'll reschedule um, hearing with the Board of Supervisors. Um, as we're talking about this, I'm just thinking that uh, any updates that we make to the Public Participation Plan, we would certainly want to get back in front of you. So um, Melissa, from a process standpoint, if we update the Public Participation Plan, that was a recommendation. From the Planning and Zoning Commission to go to the Board of Supervisors. Um, I'm under the the strong impression that we would take it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission again for their approval of an updated uh, of an updated P three.
That's correct. We would um, probably look to put it on the April. Agenda. The board did not give us a timeline.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if we have it on the uh, work session for next month, that will be adequate time then to take it back to the board in Mar- in May.
Okay, thank you. Um. Thanks. So Commissioners, you can anticipate seeing an updated Public Participation Plan for the Comprehensive Plan update. Any questions on item three? Okay, thank you. Item four, just wanted to give you all an update and make you all aware that the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan was adopted a couple months ago, several months ago, by the Board of Supervisors. So we now have an adopted, updated area plan for that area. The Area Plan Committee did get together to create a proposed amendment to that adopted area plan. As a matter of fact, the committee got together in January. That proposed amendment went to staff and the greater county staff, I'd call it county with a capital C, so certainly including the county attorney and including county management staff, reviewed that proposed amendment and saw that it was something that couldn't be administered by the area plan, essentially kind of outside the purview of the area plan. So direction from the larger county staff, including county management and the county attorney, is that that amendment will not move forward. Really, we are at a point as Community Development Staff and the larger county organization staff with moving on on many initiatives, we are happy that we have a good updated area plan for the DPTF area. But our staff has moved on now to focusing on the Flagstaff Regional Plan and Comprehensive Plan Updates. And once those Comprehensive Plan Updates are complete, then we would anticipate the cycle that many of you longstanding commissioners have seen for many years, where we continue to do updates to all of the area plans, and there's several area plans within our county that really could use an update, and the update to the Comprehensive Plan certainly will drive some direction for area plan updates. Any questions on item number four?
I have a statement I would like to share if I could, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, as co-chair, along with Brian Bates, of the Area Plan Committee, we met with Mr. or with Melissa and Jess earlier this week. And while the county may consider this a closed issue and not administrable, the Area Plan Co-Chairs disagree and are planning to pursue further efforts with our county supervisors to have this one issue, which was a very high priority issue for the members of our community to be included into that area plan. We think it's a gross injustice that it's not being included. And the explanations, as Mr. McNeely explained today, seem to be lacking in substance because they were just general in the sense that it was county staff, either legal or management, that decided this wasn't a good idea, and therefore it's a done deal and we're moving on. Co-chair Bates and I disagree. We're gonna revisit this some more, so I would say stay tuned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that information, Commissioner Wilson. And I'm not seeing any other hands raised, Mr. McNeely, so if you could bump to number five, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanting to give you your monthly reminder that we are, staff is, one of our many backburner items that as we continue to have churns of other activity, hard to get to, but we are in the middle of updating our lighting code based on the City of Flagstaff's code. We really hope to have those updates to you in a study session here in upcoming months. We really anticipate following budget season with the Board of Supervisors and the annual board break, following approval of budget going into the new fiscal year. We anticipate getting those to you. We want to get them right, but looking forward to holding study sessions with you on those code updates. So just always, always some work in the background on those. Any questions, Madam Chair or Commissioners, on working updates to the lighting code and the overall larger zoning ordinance?
Mr. McNeely, I am not seeing any. So let's go ahead and go to Board of Supervisors update.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. On Board of Supervisors update, wanted to let you know that on March twenty-first, the board held a second public hearing on the standalone county short-term rental ordinance, the STR ordinance. The action of the board was to continue the hearing, giving some direction to staff on some more clarification, particularly regarding enforcement of this ordinance. If anyone has any questions on the STR short-term rental ordinance, they can certainly contact myself or Jay, and we'd be happy to discuss that with you. Operative words here with Planning and Zoning Commission, it's a standalone ordinance. It's not connected to the zoning ordinance. Because the land use of a short-term rental is still off limits for local governments to regulate as in allow them or not allow them under zoning ordinances. STRs are typical age, they're a permitted dwelling, and that dwelling can be lived in by the property owner. It can be rented to a renter by the year. Under a lease, they can be rented to a renter by the month, and they can be rented by the night, and that's essentially what state statute says. So that's still what we're working with. But because it does tie to many issues that you, as the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, hear about and deal with, we wanted to keep you updated on the status of that. Any questions on the STR ordinance, Madam Chair or Commissioners?
This is Chair Antiveras. I do not have any, and I'm not seeing that any commissioners do at this time. So go ahead and please move to the next item.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to let you know that on April eleventh, I numbered item two here under Board of Supervisors. On April eleventh, the board is scheduled to hear the ZC twenty-three oh one. That's the project that was titled The Grand Canyon Tiny Home Village. And ZC twenty-two twenty-one, it's a project titled Grand Canyon Oasis. Those were recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission last month and therefore being forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. The ZC twenty-three oh one project in the Valley area is certainly being kind of welcomed by some of the members in the Valley area in that it's providing some workforce housing, some long-term housing in a manufactured home park. And there's a proposed fire station that could go along with that project. Of course, the fire station would require a future conditional use permit that would come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And ZC twenty-two twenty-one, The Grand Canyon Oasis, is essentially expansion of existing commercial zoning on Highway eighty-nine north of the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood area, say, on the way to Page. And there again, there's some happy community members to see that what had become a dilapidated commercial hotel motel and trading post is being renovated by a local family and given some new life and hopefully made to contribute to a good land use to the community. Any questions for, on the items going to the Board of Supervisors?
Mr. McNeely, I am not seeing any. So let's go ahead and go to Commissioner and Staff Roundtable, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. On Commission and Staff Roundtable, wanted to give a reminder that Commissioners Williams and Ruggles' terms will expire on June thirtieth of this year. So if Commissioner Ruggles and Commissioner Williams could please reach out to your supervisors and ensure you have confirmation from them if you would like to continue serving, that we could get ahead of the ballgame here and get you queued up for reappointment. Any questions or comments on item one?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, I'm a little bit ahead of you on this. I've already discussed the issue with Supervisor Rosquez. And we have kind of made an agreement relative to a self-imposed stipulation on my part because of the supervisor, supervisory district changes that are going to affect the next election. I will be forwarding that in writing to you at Community Development, Supervisor Rosquez, and also to Rena Fowler. So it's, we categorize it as not too big a deal, but I have said to Supervisor Rosquez that I would like to serve another term on the commission and details to follow. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Chair Antiveras, and I will just say that I am very happy to hear that information. So we will be waiting for the details to come. Thank you again. So we can go ahead and move to number two now, Mr. McNeely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to let you all know that we've had two community members express interest in being appointed from District Four with Supervisor Judy McGay. One of those interested individuals followed through on submitting an application. So we have forwarded that application to the Board of Supervisors for their approval. I'm optimistic that by your hearing next month, we will have a newly appointed commissioner from District Four. So we're all keeping our fingers crossed and trying to keep the seats filled. Any questions on item two?
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveras, and I'm really happy to hear that we have a potential commissioner coming on with her, his or her application already submitted. You did indicate that there were two community members that showed interest. One has submitted an application. Do you know what the status is on the one who has expressed interest?
I hadn't seen that guy in a while.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. McNeely.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thanks for asking that. The second community member who showed interest, I sent application forms to both of them. And the second community member responded that they would consider it, and when and if they decide to apply, they'll forward the application back to me. That's the standard process through the county clerk, that we then get the application in through the county clerk in front of the, in front of the board. And as you all know, that's typically something that is, there's some communication between the applicant for the commission and the supervisor. So we're just waiting on an application on the second one. It was a positive sign to see that another community, a second community member from District Four was in fact interested. So we're hoping to receive that application.
Okay, yes, and thank you for the explanation on that. And I think we all, as commissioners, are very hopeful that that will get turned in, and we'll see where that goes. All right, so let's go ahead and go to the final item under Commission and Staff Roundtable.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. The final item is now that we're looking to have at least two relatively new Planning and Zoning Commissioners on the commission, we are really due to holding a Planning and Zoning Commission Retreat. Believe we have not had one since pre-COVID. So we feel that some point this spring would be good to schedule. Usually, our Community Development Staff and specifically the Planning and Zoning Staff give some presentations. I spoke with Paul Garnes from the Attorney's Office earlier today, and he would be willing, as the Attorney's Office has in the past, to support that retreat as well and just give some refreshers. Typical topics are are open meeting law, ex parte communication, and certainly with assistance from the Attorney's Office. And we always like to revisit the concept of the findings and what are the required findings in the zoning ordinance? And how can we assist you as commissioners in being able to make those findings? So, two questions. They would be, what dates generally, as we look in the upcoming months broadly to start with, what dates work for commissioners? Or specifically, for those of you who know what dates don't work for you, we'd like to know those, and I can jot those down. And we'd also like to know your input on what topics commissioners would feel would be helpful for them in a retreat.
Okay, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveras. Just for clarification, we have a potential new commissioner coming on, but the soonest that commissioner would, when would that commissioner possibly be approved through the Board of Supervisors?
They could be approved on April eleventh.
Okay, so then it would need to be, it would be, I'm thinking it would need to be sometime after April eleventh, because I was looking to see if maybe April would work. There are dates in April that will work for me, and I can probably rearrange my schedule somewhat to accommodate it. But I will just tell you now that the weeks of May seventh, there are two weeks there, May seventh through May twentieth, the entire fourteen days, I will be unavailable. And then I'm just, so if you could write that down, and then I'm gonna go ahead, I saw Vice Chair Burton's hand raised, and then we'll move to Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I'm, it's almost impossible to nail me down for anything until the semester ends, which is May twelfth. After that, I am pretty open during the summer time if I know well enough in advance so that I don't schedule, accidentally schedule any meetings in the wrong spot.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Burton.
I'll be on a Grand Canyon trip, the sixteenth to the twenty-third of May. Sounds like it overlaps with Tammy's absence, yeah.
You said the sixteenth to the twenty-third, Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yeah. So maybe even moving into early June, I'll just leave that there, Commissioner Wilson?
I'm just curious how, if we have suggested topics for the retreat, should we forward those to both Mr. McNeely and the Chair for consideration, or how does that work?
Sure, that, yeah, we, obviously, we have limited time, and we do have a couple items that we would consider always required, such as the Attorney's Office giving open meeting law and ex parte communication. But now, we're open to what the commissioners would like to, like to have have presentations on.
One I will let you know in advance would be a consent agenda process for some of these applications that are common. And I will also say that after the eleventh of April, I am available the rest of that month and all of May, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes, I just wanted to let you and staff know that whatever date you set, I can find the time to be available for the retreat, regardless of month or date or even year for that matter, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best?
Thank you. Are we doing Zoom? Are we doing in person? Or are we doing hybrid? What are we doing?
That's a very good, that's a very good question, Commissioner Best, and thanks for asking it. So we would like to do one in person, and we certainly can, and the county has several facilities that we could do one in person. And we could offer it hybrid as well, that if for some reason a date works best for everyone, but one of our commissioners can't make it in person, they could still attend virtually on a screen. And that's one of the upsides of technology in this day and age. Is it may not be the exact same experience, but a commissioner certainly could attend hybrid. So we will toss that out there. So we, we will, we will toss that out there that the county has, has a couple of conference rooms that we could, we've successfully held some hybrid meetings. Not the best, we really have to work on the, on the audio often when somebody's in on a hybrid meeting. They'll have to ask, hey, I couldn't hear that last speaker, what they said, could you please get closer to the mic and repeat? But, but certainly we can offer that.
Yeah, hybrid would certainly make it more flexible. Generally speaking, I'm available the weekends of April 22nd and June 24th. I do have family events out of town, so. I could probably still make a Zoom meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Mr. McNeeley, this is Chair Antiveris, and I, I am glad to know that we can do this in person, that would be my preference. Also, understanding though that it is good to have that hybrid option. You had mentioned earlier, I believe you said that we have limited time. Of course, this is only going to be like a one-day thing. This isn't going to be a multi-day on event, but can you expound on what you meant by limited time?
Okay, well, the way this is traditionally done, been done in the past, but we're, we're not, we're not trapped by that. We can always do things differently. They, they've generally been a half-day, a half-day retreat. So we would certainly offer for starters a half-day retreat that, that usually works for, for staff. Because we have, you know, many conflicting meetings going multiple different directions across the greater, the greater county organization and partner organizations that we work with. But staff can certainly commit to, to a half-day. I think we may have done this in the past where we could go into lunch. Unfortunately, the county is, is now under a policy where unlike, unlike some of the good old days, we don't have budget to be able to use for food. So we, so we can't offer that. But we can always do a bring your own sack lunch. So we, what's worked well in the past and, and what seems to work well for, for absorption of information is, is about a half-day. But we would certainly be open to, to pushing the lunch if we had some creative ideas on, on how we could do that. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
Yes, it does answer my question. And the only, really, the only reason I asked was you asked for retreat topics from the commissioners. And I'm not, I'm not, I have no idea what you may receive. And I wanted to be sure, especially because we've got, you know, potential, well, we definitely have one new commissioner and potentially two. And they may have, on, you know, more questions than, you know, we're anticipating. And I just wanted to be sure that we allow appropriate time to get, to get the questions answered in a comfortable setting where we can talk openly with each other. So that was, I, I think maybe we should be flexible on the time to allow to see what you get in for suggested topics. And then see how we fit them in from there and, and maybe, maybe gauge the date that way. That's just what I'm thinking. I'm thinking out loud here, so.
Absolutely. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay, and Commissioner Best?
Wouldn't it be fun to do some sort of a tour of something to maybe break up two sessions? For instance, some sort of a tour of something at Fort Tuchel, maybe all Fort Tuchel. I, I don't know what you guys want to show off, but that would make it fun, I think. And I'm just all about fun.
That's, that's a great idea, if it's, if it's good weather. Thank you.
Yeah, and we've had, we've actually had a retreat at Fort Tuchel before. So, so you know what? I think that we've, we've thrown some ideas your way, Mr. McNeeley. Why don't, why don't you take what, you know, kind of what you got there and start figuring out what might work best for everyone? Get with us and we'll, we will certainly do our best to coordinate with you to make, to make this a successful retreat.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if anyone has any, anyone can reach out to, to myself or any of our other staff members, if you, if you have thoughts about, if you have any updated information on dates, on when you're available, when you're not available, or ideas for for topics. Madam Chair, I see that we've got three different commissioners' hands raised, so I don't know if you want to take those on this item.
Yeah, let's do, let's go ahead. Commissioner Ruggles, yours was up, I believe, first.
Okay, I would like to concur with Commissioner Best on the suggestion that we do this at Fort Tuchel. The last one was there. I also like the time of year that this is being done. I might be able to attend this one without getting a brain concussion as a result.
That, that was the first thing I thought of, Commissioner Ruggles, when, when Commissioner Best suggested Fort Tuchel.
Okay, all right, yes. Yeah, and I, I remember that, Commissioner Ruggles. Yes, okay, Vice Chair Burton.
So it's not on this particular item, so if there's anybody that needs to discuss it more, they can go first. But I just had a question about in-person hearing and where we stand on that, just based off of last time's conversation.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Madam Chair, and, and thanks, Vice Chair Burton. It's same, same as you've heard for a long time. The, the board chambers, the board supervisors' chambers where, where y'all used to meet is still, is, I'm still in a renovation to get that facility to where it can hold a hybrid meeting. When that facility is updated to where it can hold a hybrid meeting and we can meet, you know, what the entire larger county organization feels is, is adequate for hybrid public hearings and meeting all of our requirements for hybrid public meetings, then, then we would anticipate that we would be holding hybrid in-person public meetings. However, people could still attend virtually in those chambers. Our problem is the chamber renovation. I, I just, I was just in a meeting in that same room, actually, day before yesterday. And it's still under, under active renovation. As a matter of fact, I had some of the seats blocked off not to be used because I believe those seats are being removed. So when that, when that is complete, I'm sure we can, we can approach it. Again, we've been taking the Board of Supervisors' lead on this, but we have always continued to let the supervisors know what we hear from, from this commission on, you know, the desire to meet again in person.
Okay, so.
Yeah, when is that expected? When is the projected completion time for the administration room?
Madam Chair, I, I bet I can get that information. I apologize, I didn't bring that information with me to this meeting, but, but we can certainly, we can certainly have an answer to you as soon as we can get something. I'm sure the, the Facilities Department for the county has, has some active project management scheduled for it. I know for, for quite some time, there was a, a backorder on a lot of the IT equipment to make that happen. And I'm, I'm not sure if that's still the case, if there's an unknown on, on delivery of the equipment, but we can certainly get you an answer on that.
Okay, Vice Chair Burton, go ahead.
Have you guys looked at any other venues to be able to hold in-person hearings? Because I know that there are plenty of locations, like at NAU's campus, that would meet all the needs and qualifications for for being able to do a hybrid hearing. Is that something that's been looked into?
Thanks, Vice Chair Burton. That, that's something that certainly has been, has been discussed at the staff level just in discussion, but hasn't been formally pursued. We, we were, you know, as, as we've communicated, as we've communicated to the commission just following the, the board's lead on getting the board chambers to updated to where that, to where that facility could hold, could hold hybrid meetings. That's not something that has been formally pursued, but that's certainly something that we could, that we could put a question to. Probably, I would think the PIO is, is, is heavily engaged in the technology of that room and what would be required to, to have a, a good facility for open meeting law? And what of other facilities within the area could meet that as well? And we can, we can ask across the larger county organization if, if there's any input on, on going that direction of using a partners, one of our partners facilities for that type of meeting.
Okay, yeah, if you provided me with a list, I could provide you with a list of rooms that would work. Because I mean, that's what I do at NAU is manage all the AV equipment. So, if I know what you need, I can, I can tell you what would work.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton, and we can, we can certainly follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm just curious, is the, the need to have a hybrid meeting defined or requ, is that requirement written down someplace? Where, where does, why does it have to be a hybrid meeting? And the second half of that question is, is, is the facility the only reason that we can't do it? There is no medical or other reason why we couldn't have in-person meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And, and we can get a, a more definitive answer and, and we can, we can get a, a a, certainly a clear answer to you that would say come from the, from the county management staff. There is no medical reason. There's, you know, there's no prohibition on holding in-person meetings. That's for sure. I, I haven't seen in writing, but, but we will certainly find out if this is in writing. Our understanding is we, we were following the board's direction on if we are going to have public hearings in the future that are in-person public hearings, that it's, that it's become an expectation in this day and age that those hearings are available to be attended virtually as well. So that people who possibly, who, who possibly can't attend in person because of medical reasons or, or otherwise, could still attend the meeting, could still attend the hearing virtually. So that's, that's the push. I, I don't know that it's, that it's necessarily in writing. I believe it's just a, a practice of trying to be as open and accommodating to, to as much of the county as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeeley. Yeah, you've heard the questions, and if you could maybe see if you can get some answers and bring back to the April meeting. I think that the commissioners are, you know, kind of anxious to, to hear what's going on. Because like I said, we are now more than three years without meeting in public. We have now surpassed the three-year mark where we have not had an in-person public hearing for this commission for Coquenino County. So I, I'll leave it at that. And yeah, you can, when you get some answers, we would like to hear those next month, though. Yeah, and this is Chair. Are there any other, for the commissioners, oh, Commissioner Best?
Thank you. On, on a completely different topic. There were a couple of things I read in the newspaper in the last few weeks. I don't know how many people read the newspaper anymore, local paper. That I thought were very interesting. As you know, I'm big on, we, we've had pretty much a campground a month or a trailer park a month for the last three years. And I'm very big on trying to educate folks in that world about how to have a great time and also take care of Coquenino County. It was really disappointing to hear that apparently there was such bad behavior at Grand Falls that the local Navajo community blocked the road. And that is really a loss to me. I mean, I love going out there and I'm sure I'm not, I'm not the only one. And it's also on every tourist list in the area. And so that's a situation where people just behave badly with leaving trash and going places they shouldn't. And OHV's tearing around to the point where people just got some rocks and blocked the road. Another issue that that was in the paper was the realifying watershed. And I had thought that was underreported for a long time, so I was really glad to see it on the front page. After a meeting of the supervisors and city council where they had a report from our experts on the realifying watershed, and bottom line is, you probably read it, that if that goes up in flames before it's thin, Jay Smith, our forest restoration director, said it's $2 billion. If you can imagine the $2 billion of damage going down through Cheshire, Coquenino states and hitting downtown, it's unimaginable. And so that just reinforces to me that we have to do the best job that we can to educate folks. And we have five million people a year coming here from all over the world. We live two hours from the fifth biggest city in the country and probably the fastest growing large city in the country. And, you know, we, we love our open spaces and we have the code of the West in the comprehensive plan. But at the same time, we are influenced by demand from all the tourists and travelers and the folks down in the city. And we want to be. I mean, we, you know, that's the biggest business probably in northern Arizona. But we need to educate people about how to take care of this land. And so those just were items that interested me. I was really, it sounds strange, but I was really glad to see the headlines about the danger to the real flag because I had thought that that was under underreported and, and I know everybody is scrambling to get that thinned as fast as possible. And we'll just cross our fingers and hope the the west side of the peaks and the south side doesn't end up looking like the east side because that would be a big tragedy. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Do any other commissioners or staff have anything else at this time for the roundtable? All right, I'm not seeing any. My, my clock shows 5:12. So let's take about a 15-minute break and we'll start the public hearing promptly at 5:30.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. Are, is staff ready to go?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, I see that it's 5:30 and, uh, Community Development Staff is certainly ready to hold this hearing.
All right, all right. Uh, this again, this is Chair Aunt Taveris, and I am going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to begin by me reading the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the March 29th, 2023 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, please do not use the comment function for discussion. It is for communicating with staff if you have a problem, say with connectivity or something of that nature. But it is not used to express your views or comments on any particular case. With that, thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, would everyone please stand? And Mr. McNeely, would you please lead us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the February 22nd, 2023 minutes. If there are no corrections, modifications, I will accept a motion to approve, a motion, a second to approve, please.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2023.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of the February 22nd, 2023 minutes by Vice Chair Burton, a second by Commissioner Ruggles. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Um, Mr. McNeely, I do want to just ask you real quickly. I am not seeing Commissioner Clifford on our list of participants tonight. Are you seeing him or am I missing him? I just do not want to exclude anyone.
Uh, Madam Chair, I was just checking for the same thing, and I do not see Commissioner, uh, Jim Clifford on this meeting. Um, if he, if I see him pop on, I will be sure to notify you of that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And regardless, though, we do have six, uh, commissioners present, so we do have a quorum, so we will be having a meeting. The next item on the agenda are the public hearings. The first case is CUP 23-008.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff while, while Bob's getting his screen shared. Uh, this is a conditional use permit request for recreational vehicles of permanent residence. Uh, this is generally in the valley area in, uh, in District One, and Bob Short is presenting this case. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, there we go. Thanks. Can everyone hear me and see my screen?
Yes, we sure can.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, this case is the Guzman RV as a residence, that's CUP 23-008. And in this case, the property owner and the applicant is Celia Guzman of Flagstaff, Arizona. The zoning is AR Agricultural Residential, one acre minimum parcel size zone. And the property size is 1.03 acres. The property is located at 896 East Concho Road in Valley. And the request is to use an RV as a permanent residence utilizing the systems in the RV for water, wastewater, and electricity. The applicant does plan on installing a wastewater system in the future if she is able. And it's a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see this is the intersection of US Highway 180 and State Route 64 in Valley, so it's kind of about halfway between those, quite a ways off of the road. And this is narrow photo show on the subject property. This is East Concho Road and South Lowell Drive. As you can tell, these, the roads out here are not very well developed. This is a site plan on a survey of the property, so you can see about the location of the trailer on the property. And this is a photo of the proposed RV. The applicant is living on the property with a temporary use permit. So this is it. It's nice and simple, and this is the RV and the property that it would be on. All right, in terms of citizen participation, property owners within 300 feet of the subject property were notified of a meeting. And the meeting was actually held here at the Community Development Offices. That was upon the request of the applicant who wanted some help with that meeting, so he went ahead and held it here. And that was held on January 27, 2023. No one attended the meeting or commented on the application, and staff hasn't received any comments on this application either. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. Those have been addressed in your staff report. If you have any questions about those, we can discuss those. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP 23-008 with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
All right, I, Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Mr. Short, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present this evening. If so, please address the commission, and I would like to ask if you have received the staff report and if you have read it and agree with the conditions. Mr. Short, do you know if the applicant is present?
Madam Chair, I do not see her name on the list. I did, I, my understanding was that she might have difficulty getting to the hearing because she doesn't have good service out there in Valley. And as we have discussed before, the applicant does not have a present for the commission to approve a CUP.
Yes, exactly. I just, again, I just did not want to miss her and not give her an opportunity to address the commission if she was here. So, thank you for that. You confirmed what I thought. I'm now going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please either unmute or raise your hand. And not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it at commission discussion. Commissioner Ruggles, could you please begin this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have to state that I visited the site with staff for the posting, and there was no ex parte conversation or discussion with the applicant involved in that. So beyond that, I can just state that the photograph shows that the area was neat, uncluttered, and I can make the findings for this. So, that being said, that's enough.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
I can make the findings to approve this CUP.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
I'm pleased that these applicants are coming in more often. I know there's probably a lot of folks who are not coming in, and so I can make the findings.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also can make the findings, and with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please, to approve this.
I would make a motion that we approve CUP 23-008 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, I had a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Williams to approve CUP 23-008 with conditions as written. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Bass?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is case number ZC 22018.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeeley with Community Development Staff. ZC 22-18 is a zone change request from RR5 to RR1. Kelly Bingham of our staff is managing this case. As, as the commissioners would know from your packet in communications, you did hear this last month. However, staff discovered that we did not meet our regulatory noticing requirement of surrounding property owners. So, we, to, to stay in performance with state statute and the county zoning ordinance, we are reholding this hearing. So, Kelly, if you're ready to give your presentation, go ahead.
I'm ready. Thank you, Mr. McNeeley. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Really quickly before I start, I do have a little bit of a cold today, so my apologies if I'm sounding a little off. But I'll go ahead and get started, and we'll try to keep this a little bit brief today since you heard it last month. All right, so our applicant is Brandon Richards from Flagstaff, Arizona. The owner of the property is AXXO Holdings. Location of the parcel is 7175 Naples Observatory Road. This is right along the I-40 West. The parcel size is about an acre, just a little bit over, and the current zoning is RR5 Rural Residential with a five acre minimum. Their request is a zone change from RR5 to the RR1 zone to develop a single-family dwelling. As I mentioned, you can see this is just north of the I-40 on the west side of Flagstaff. And here's the subject property. This is a photo of the subject property from the easement to the north. And the reasons that the applicant is requesting this is because permits cannot be obtained currently. The parcel is too small for the zoning, and therefore, community development cannot issue any permits for it. Adjacent properties have homes, and the applicant would also like to develop a home on this property. They tried this with the variance a little while ago, but the findings are different, and it will work out better for them to try and request the zone change rather than the variance route. Here's the site plan of the property. This is just a rough site plan. Of course, they would submit full building plans if they were to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. And this is a little bit of an odd parcel. It's called Tract B, and it was created with the West Peak subdivision. And the tract was physically separated from the rest of the original parcel, which is 66 acres. And it was just this little corner that was not connected. The tract had no purpose on the plat. Typically, there's a designation, and unfortunately, there was not one on this plat. The conditions did suggest that the tracts could be developed with the issuance of a variance. But again, there was no purpose given, so there was nothing that was outlined for them to do without a variance. Here's a photo of the subdivision plot, just for reference. Here's Tract B. And this is Tract A. This is an analysis on the topography and the community character of this parcel. I can go back over this if the commission has any questions, but for now, I'll skip onto this photo, which I think illustrates it pretty well. Just due to the incline, you can see there's a steep slope here. The parcels to the east are pretty unlikely to be able to see or hear anything going on in this parcel. As you can see, it's pretty far from any of the existing homes in the subdivision, and it's pretty heavily treated. The applicant did hold a virtual neighborhood meeting, and they received three letters of opposition. One person attended the meeting. Staff received two letters of opposition after writing the staff report last month. And since then, we've received six additional letters. And all of these letters are from a total of five property owners. Staff analysis is that this request does not have any significant impacts from noise, traffic, visuals, or anything else that might be disturbing to the nearby properties. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, regional plan, and zoning ordinance, and the approval would eliminate a non-conforming situation. The rural residential zoning is going to remain the same, so it's going to have the same allowable uses and the same performance standards. I would also like to address that a lot of citizens submitted comments. I reviewed all of them. If you don't see something in this analysis that you brought up, I just want to let you know that we cannot consider everything. There are state statutes that prevent us from considering certain aspects of this project. Here are the findings for a zone change. And staff recommends approval, that you forward approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC 2218. And I'll accept any questions from the commission now.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes. As a part of my responsibilities for the commission, I normally sit in on the study session or the staff study session prior to the commission's study session. And I'm not too sure whether this is appropriate to ask of Ms. Bingham or not, but she did go over the basis that really can't be used in terms of making findings in a case like this. And I do not know at this point whether it is appropriate to ask her to share that with the commission or not.
Commissioner Ruggles, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I actually think that your comment is timely because I was going to ask staff to list, excuse me, Ms. Bingham, can you go back and put up the screen that has the three findings of fact that this commission, okay? Findings for a zone change. These are the three findings that this commission must make in order to approve a zone change. I have read all of the letters of opposition that were submitted, and there are many things in there that this commission cannot consider. I'm going to list the ones that I know, Ms. Bingham, and I want you to follow on top of me for ones that I have missed. But we cannot consider the variance hearing. We cannot consider water issues. We cannot consider what this app, what the applicant, what his profession is for a living, what he does. We cannot consider speculative develop, develop reasons for why he is doing this because no one's crystal ball is working. We have to bring it back down to these three. And so I would like to ask Ms. Bingham, other than the ones that I have listed that I found to be irrelevant, could you please now state other ones that you feel would be?
Could I add something to that?
I, yes, you can, Commissioner Ruggles.
Well, Ms. Bingham had prepared a part of a presentation slide that listed a number of those items. And I am with you on this, regardless of whether she can put that up on the screen or not. I identified all of the conditions that she listed on that presentation page, except one. So I was a little remiss in that, but nevertheless, I believe you've listed most of that, but I thought that her work on that was extremely well done.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff or council, but I do not see any reason why that screen could not be shown. Can anyone? Mr. McNeeley, is it, do you see any reason why that could not be listed? Because
Chair Aunt Taveras?
Yeah, yes, go ahead, counsel.
I'm sorry. This is Paul Garns from the County Attorney's Office. I had counseled Ms. Bingham to, to take that slide off just to not have a chilling effect on anything that the public might have to chime in on. Now, so legally, I'm walking a line. I'm not able to tell the public what they can say or not say. I can give legal counsel to the board and its members on what they can consider or not consider. So, for those reasons, I counseled Kelly to take that slide off to avoid any kind of chilling effect on the public's willingness to speak. But I would just urge the, the commission members to, to know what, know what findings they are making, keep their discussion tailored specifically to those findings. And Ms. Bingham is more than welcome to go into any of those things that she listed in the study session. But that would be my counsel to the board at this time. Thanks.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then based on that, you know, counsel, would it be appropriate to have you state now at this, while we're at staff presentation and while the commission is considering this, would it be appropriate for you to list what we cannot consider?
It would. This is perhaps a situation where the commission could go into executive session to receive legal counsel under the appropriate statute. But that requires a vote from the commission, and there's nothing I can do to spur that on. But that's just something to consider.
Okay, and, and I do, I thank you for that. I don't feel that we need to move in that direction right now. But the reason that I asked if you could state it in public was so that all of the participants that are here tonight that are in opposition, I wanted them to hear from council, from staff, what this commission can and cannot consider because there were many points that were brought up in the opposition letters that would be considered irrelevant to what we can consider in this case. But why don't we leave it there for now? I do appreciate your counsel. And, and I'm going to move to the other commissioners that have questions for staff at this time. Commissioner Best, I believe your hand was raised first.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, do we know who owns track A? Uh, I, I just, this is a really confusing case. Is there a homeowners association that owns track A?
Commissioner Best, I can do my best to address that. Um, so track A, uh, from what it looks like to me, and I don't know if this is accurate. But the way that it shows up in our Coconino County parcel viewer is as a part of the right of way. It is no longer a private parcel, uh, the way that track B or any other private parcel would be in Coconino County. Uh, my understanding is that this is where the well is, uh, for the rest of the subdivision. Um, and again, I don't know the legal details of how uh, that arrangement is, who owns it. But I can tell you that it is no longer a private parcel.
Thank you. Um, I am looking at the third. Finding that we need to make, that the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood. Nor be detrimental to adjacent properties. And uh, we've heard from staff that generally speaking, as the parcel exists. Uh, if there were a, a home on it. It would not be very visible and doesn't seem like it would. Adversely affect the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to work on the details of that. One thing that comes to mind is if we. Established a uh, building envelope. So that. The trees would substantially remain on the property. I think if the property were clear cut. In my mind, it would have a negative effect on the neighborhood. The other question is whether we could require that the. Property uh, that the CCNRs in the area apply to this property. And I don't know what the CCNRs are. But it would just put this house on the same footing. With the neighborhood and therefore make it less likely to be uh. And less likely to adversely affect the neighborhood. So there are two questions, a building envelope with preservation of trees outside of the envelope. And whether we could put in a condition that says that. This house must uh, follow the CCNRs of the neighborhood. And I'll just, uh, those are questions, so um. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. I'm happy to address. Um, your question about the CCNRs was something that staff discussed in detail before getting on this call. I know it was concern um, of a lot of the neighbors. Uh, but what we decided was that um. Because the CCNRs are private agreements between private property owners. It's not something that the county has purview over. So we cannot condition it because it's, it's completely private legal process. What I will say is that those are able to be amended, but again, it's a private process that would be separate from our discussion here today. As far as the trees, I would also just like to say. Uh, as it stands now, you do not need a permit to cut down trees in Coconino County. You'd not come to community development for that. Currently, the property owner could cut down the trees if they wanted to, and that would be their prerogative. It's their property. Uh, again, no permits are needed. So we can discuss that, but um, that's just something to consider.
So my question is, can we impose? A building envelope and have the. The rest of the property be left as it is. Uh, a precedent for this is the Museum of Northern Arizona. Uh, where we've just been through this and uh, Mr. McNeely knows about that case. Uh, where there's an in, building, uh, lots were sold, building envelopes were established. And the rest of the property must remain in its natural state.
Sure, um, you know, I might let um, Mr. McNeely or our legal counsel address that. Um, I would say it, it would not be staff's recommendation, uh, but I'll let them address instead.
Thanks, Kelly. This is, now Chair, this is Jess McNeely with, with Community Development Staff. So um, that's a great example, Commissioner Best, that you gave. Um, of, of where building envelopes were used to leave a very large parcel. Um, primarily in uh, in open space and limit the building to a, a smaller building envelope. If memory serves me right, the building envelopes um, in the, the MNA properties as part of their conservation easement. Were, were probably at least an acre, if not larger. Um, so uh, one thing I will point out is, is in a way, the county zoning ordinance does have building envelopes. It's called building setbacks. So this is a, this is a one acre site. And we've seen the proposed um, simple site plan. So the, in the RR zoning district. The, the building setbacks would be a twenty-five foot front setback. A fifteen foot uh, street side setback being that, that's uh, this property does. Um, does border Naval Observatory Road here. And it would have a twenty-foot rear setback. So we can, uh, so in a way, once you draw those setbacks in on a property. That does create a building envelope that limits where, where a building can go on the si, on the site. Um, uh, generally speaking, our experience in, in heavily wooded areas such as this. Is that uh, the expense of taking down trees is, is significant. And typically, the value of properties has to do with the views of the ponderous, of the native ponderosa pine trees. So we've, you know, we've really seen this as, as a problem that takes care of itself, so to speak. Um, that we haven't needed to, uh, the county hasn't needed to have a tree preservation ordinance. On um, on uh, private residential properties. Because it's expensive to take those trees down and uh, general, and people want to retain the trees. So uh, you know, the, the setbacks do, do act as a, do essentially create a building envelope. Um, on this one acre site, which is, which is, you know, not, not large as a one acre site. Um, and uh, you can certainly ask the applicant, uh, their intent. Um, but that, it's not a common, um, it's not common for residential properties under our zoning ordinance. Uh, to go to, to the extent of requiring preservation of, of native trees on a site. Um, I, I really feel that um, you know, this is a small site right at the edge of City of Flagstaff. Uh, having the trees on the property are probably of much greater value um, to the applicant. Um, uh, for use of the site in the future, um, and enjoyment of the site in the future. Um, uh, than, than the expense of taking them down. So I hope that helps.
Uh, Commissioner Best, this, okay, your, your hand was down. All right, I'm going to, uh, thank you, Mr. McNeely for that. Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to suggest that perhaps um, Council Garns and your goals. Could both be met if we waited to have Ms. Bingham's slide presented till after public comment, so that it would not impact. What um, they wanted to share with us, but still inform us. Um, I feel that um, that Commissioner Ruggles, having already seen it and other people being aware of it. Is leaving the rest of us in the dark, so I would like to recommend that as a consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson, and your suggestion uh, has been noted. Are there any other questions from commissioners at this time for staff? Not seeing any, I'm going to ask if the applicant, the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening. If so, please state your name and address for the record, and I would also like to ask if you have read the staff report. And if you agree.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Uh, barely. We can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Uh-oh, that's strange. I've got my uh, my mic and everything plugged in here. Um, okay, so my name is Brandon Richards. I am the applicant and I have um. Read everything and agreed to those. Sorry, I forget the terminology you said, but.
Um, Mr. Richards, could I ask at this time if you could state your address?
Sorry about that. Yep, uh, my address is seven five three Comanche. And the Flagstaff, Arizona eight six zero zero five, and that's in Mountaineer, and I'm a renter here. I do not own property in Arizona.
Oh, okay, thank you for that. And uh, my question was, is if you had read the staff report. And agreed with that, um, and anything else you wish to say at this time?
Yes, ma'am, I have read and I, I agree to that. So I didn't know if, if I should reiterate or re-go over the. Pre-drafted um, information that I spoke on last month. Um, do you think that's necessary? I know that we only had one more email come in and it wasn't really based on the findings required. So I didn't know if I should or shouldn't go over that. I'm happy to, if you want me to.
Um, what I'm going to do is, I do know that it was presented last month, and I do know that. Staff has given somewhat of an abbreviated presentation based on the commission having heard it. Uh, last month. So why don't you hold off on it at this time? And I'm, I'm going to ask if the commissioners though, after you're done speaking, if they have any questions for you. And then you can address any of it at that point if they do, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so do you have anything else to add, Mr. Richards?
Um, no, I mean, I did figure out a way to screen share, I think, to show some of my documents, but. I don't think it's ultra necessary, as I verbally stated some of my, my uh, speaking points last time and. Um, essentially it all kind of, um. It's kind of in line with almost identical to what Kelly points on with all her findings, so I'll just leave it as is for now and I'll wait for their, their questions. Oh, I did want to bring up, they mentioned the trees a minute ago. Um, and I mentioned in my last meeting, but I just wanted to reiterate that my full intention is to design the house. On the property in the least intrusive manner. Um, I haven't been up there in quite a bit since the snow started coming. But um, our site plan that we submitted is pretty on par to where we want the house to go. Uh, we want it the furthest away from Naval Observatories possible, because there's quite a big buffer between. Uh, the parcel and the highway. Um, so we're, we're, we're going to be in the, the, the wide open, that would be this. Southwest corner of that parcel. Um, and I don't know that it matters much, but. We're not a fan of a big house, so we're only going to build like twenty-one hundred square feet, twenty-three hundred square feet, you know, nothing atrocious. Um, and we have every intention of keeping as many trees as possible.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Richards. At this time, I am going to ask if any commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time. Uh, right, and I am not seeing any. So I am going to, uh. Ask if there is anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand. I will call on you. Please state your name and address for the record. And Mr. McNeely, if you would please start a three-minute time and give a one-minute. Um, notice prior to their time expiring, okay?
Will do, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. The uh, first hand I see raised is Mr. Steve Philpott. Mr. Philpott, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Steve Philpott. Uh, I live at, my wife and I live at seventy-one fifty West Naval Observatory Road. Our property is adjacent to this one point zero seven acre parcel. Um, we are in opposition to the approval of rezoning this property. We are one of the original partners of this subdivision. Um, at the time, or even now, this piece of property did not conform with the minimum. Size requirements as established by the zoning for the subdivision. Um, county wouldn't let us do anything. Um, with it at that time, and, and so it had been uh, donated to a nonprofit to preserve it. Looking at the county zoning ordinance, it quotes, the purpose of a zoning ordinance is to conserve. Promote the public, public health, safety, convenience and general welfare of the present and future citizens. So I, so one thing that seems like is, has been skipped over. On this is what the protection of public welfare is. Um, just doing a, uh, internet search at public welfare. Property rights are essential for protecting citizens from exploitation and abuse. Sets clear rules for the ownership and use of public resources. This ensures the public interests are safeguarded. This includes access to clean air, water and other natural resources, as well as a protection of cultural heritage. Monuments with proper enforcement of public welfare, property rights. Citizens can assure that their rights and the interests will be respected and upheld. The, this ultimately leads to a more equitable and prosperous, prosperous society for all. Um, so zoning requirements are a necessary tool for protecting public welfare. The last lot in our subdivision, um, that actually complies with the zoning requirements. Is sixty-one hundred West Bell Springs Road. That lot uh, recently sold last summer for five hundred. And seven thousand dollars. Um, this lot, the developer purchased it for approximately one hundred thousand dollars. So your decision tonight has a huge impact on the property values. Um, if you approve it, he gets to live in this neighborhood for a hundred thousand dollars where. The last person just paid five hundred thousand dollars to live here. Um, so in my view, grant, granting this zoning request. Will be viewed as providing the owner, peace and the applicant Brendan Richards with special privileges. Any approval of this zoning request would be contrary to the intent of the RR five rural residential five acre minimum zoning. Of the Coconino County residential properties. So I urge this board to deny the zoning request in order to preserve the general intent and purpose of the established zoning ordinance.
Madam Chair, uh, that's, that's the end of the, uh, apologize for not catching the one minute, but that's the three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Chair Antiveris, I don't know if you're trying to speak, but you're muted.
Oh, yes, thank you, Vice Chair Burton. I was speaking and I was muted. Um, I'm going to ask if there is anyone else in the public that wishes to address this commission this evening on this case. If so, please raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. And not seeing any, I'm going to, um, excuse me, I do see someone, Mr. Paul F. Tang?
Yes.
Okay, yes, please state your name and address uh, in three minutes and Mr. McNeely give a one-minute uh, notice.
Absolutely. Hi, my name's Paul F. Tang. I'm at sixty-nine hundred West Naval Observatory. Um, right adjacent to the property in question. And um, I, I'm in opposition as well. The, that lot was uh, originally never meant to be built on. Um, as you, one of the commissioners stated, it is a very strange situation because track A is where uh, our. Water co-op has our well. And track B uh, is basically situated in the same way, but for some reason. Uh, before uh, I was a part of this community, that uh, tract was donated to a nonprofit. With the understanding that it would remain green space. Uh, why that happened, I don't know. I haven't been able to really get those details, but. Uh, track A and track B were never meant to be developed as single-family homes. As such, the CCNRs were written uh, in a way that didn't include them. So now, uh, twenty-six years later, if the zoning has changed. And a house is built on it, it's technically going to be a part of our community, but not subject to the CCNRs. Which I've never seen before. Um, so it, it is a very strange situation. And uh, I know I haven't had a whole lot of time, nor have any of the uh, other residents in this community. To research uh, all of the legalities behind this. It was kind of thrown on us last minute, so. Um, yeah, I, that's basically my stance. I, I, I wish I had a little bit more uh, concrete. Information to give, but uh, I just know that that was never supposed. But, um, I just know that that was never supposed to be a single-family development. And, uh, changing the zoning now, when originally it wasn't changed for the community. So the community donated it. It it just seems like a very strange situation.
So Paul, Madam Chair, you're, you're at one minute, you're at one minute left on your time.
Yeah, I, that's about all I have to say. I mean, there, there's, you know, concerns about water and all that. But I know it was said the commission really doesn't take that into account. Um, but I, I don't know if there's any, anything to take into consideration as far as the origin of why that property, tract B, uh, came to be owned by a developer. But, um, it, it's just very strange that this community wasn't allowed to be, develop it, donated it to a nonprofit. Twenty-six years later, nonprofit sells it to a developer and now suddenly the county's gonna change it.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. F. Tang. I'm going to ask again if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case tonight? If so, please unmute or raise your hand and I will call on you. Okay, I am not seeing any. Mr. McNeely, are you seeing anyone? I do not want to exclude anyone. Um, from addressing.
Chair, yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing anyone's hand up either.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, all right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close it to public comment and open it at, um, commission discussion. The first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Mr. Garnes, our counsel, if according to Mr. or Commissioner Wilson's, um, suggestion, if we can have the list of items that this commission cannot discuss displayed. Now that the completed their comments.
Sure, Madam Chair. Um, I, I don't see the problem with it at this point.
Okay, and I just want to be really clear with both of the, the commission and, um, the members of the public that are here tonight. The reason that I want that displayed is because I want this decision, I want everyone to know how this commission comes to the decision that it's going to come to and the things that we cannot, can and cannot consider. Um, because I know that there are some very, I read every letter that was sent in. And I just want the, I just want the participants to know that, um, we take this job very seriously. But we are constrained by what we can and cannot consider. So at this time, Ms. Bingham, would you please put the slide up so the commissioners and members of the public can see it?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Are you able to see this now?
Um, yes, and what I'm going to do, because, um, it's being recorded, I'm actually gonna read these off. There's not, there's not that many, so this will not take time. Um, what cannot be considered is who is making the request. That's item number one. Item number two, water availability. Number three, potential to use home, to use home as a short-term rental. Number four, potential effects on property values or other monetary aspects of the project. Number five, private agreements between property owners or intentions of past property developers. Six, previous land use decisions. And seven, potential future lot division requests. So down at the bottom, I'm reading this into the record. These topics must not be considered in making the findings a fact. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start commission discussion this evening. Um, Commissioner Ruggles, would you begin, please?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I am, uh, quite pleased to see that, uh, Commissioner Wilson's request has been, uh, acted on and granted and that we are looking at these conditions right now. The, uh, I was able to identify all of those except for the future lot division requests. And I think it is quite valuable that we acted this way on Commissioner Wilson's request because, uh, he, as well as some others who have served on this commission or are still on the commission, um, have not been looking at this kind of thing over, over a period dating back over thirty years like I have. So it is very worth while having this.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, this is Chair Antivarius, and I do apologize for interrupting.
Okay.
But our legal counsel has his hand raised and I'm wondering if he would like to address the commission at this time?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Ruggles.
That's okay.
Okay, um, oof, what? I'm here as legal counsel only. I'm not here to, uh, weigh in on any of the policy decisions that are reserved to this board and its members. It is, well, what I'm here to advise the board on is to keep your considerations um, of any zone change or anything that comes before this board. Keep them well-based on the findings that are required to be made. There, there can be discussion of, you know, but pretty much anything here. So I am not trying to muzzle any member of the, the body that would want to at least discuss or entertain, um, things that are outside of those findings. But in coming to a decision, those findings are paramount. So what I'm trying to do here is make a distinction between discussion, which needs to be free-ranging and robust, and the making of your decision based on the findings that needs to be narrow and tailored, again, same word that I've been, uh, repeating over and over here, tailored to the findings. I hope that makes sense, and if you have any questions, um, feel free.
Okay. I,
Yeah.
If I can continue just a little bit here, yeah, I, I, I have to agree with counsel completely on this. And as I said, uh, it is, uh, very good, uh, that we are looking at this right now. Um, because the findings and how we make the findings have to be supportable. Uh, so with that, uh, in mind, um, I'm only gonna add one other thing. And it is not a to be or not to be considered. And that is the fact that, uh, what we are doing here is simply making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Um, I think the, um, the folks who have spoken in opposition and written and, uh, those living in the, uh, the subdivision, uh, need to be aware of that because they do have a right to appeal, which, uh, our chair has, uh, stated at the beginning of this. Uh, that being said, uh, I have seen nothing, uh, presented that would change the evaluation that I made at the hearing, um, that we had on this the first time around. Uh, and that means that I can make findings a fact. And that when I look at this, what we see as, uh, not to be considered, those are what I use when I look at how I make the findings. And those are the things that I have considered. So that being said, I will turn it over to the rest of the commission at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Commissioner Ruggles. And your, your hand is still raised, but I'm thinking that that, it's only because you have, okay, there we go. Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Um, I think in my heart, I would like to be able to consider some of these things that we cannot consider. But that being the fact, um, I, I can make the findings. So, I don't know, there you have it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm also in the same position I was last time. Uh, this is a difficult case. Uh, it's really the result of a mistake years and years ago. Uh, but just looking at the three findings and I'm staring at them, I don't believe that this affects the character of the surrounding neighborhood much at all. And, uh, I would be reticent to tell a private property owner that he or she could in no way develop their property when it's as large as this is. So, um, I think one of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan is, uh, to provide housing and, uh, license for people to live. So I can make the findings, although it's a tough case. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Wilson?
I can make findings one and two, but I cannot make finding three. Um, in my opinion, the, um, input that we have asked for from the general public, um, and particularly those that, um, are immediately affected, um, has to be respected, or we shouldn't be asking for it in the first place. And, um, with five nays and no one supporting it, um, while Commissioner Best may think it, it's not going to have too much of an effect, um, I'm deferring to the public comment we've received where, um, the effect is more than the neighborhood would want and therefore the character of the surrounding neighborhood would be affected. So I cannot make finding number three.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Um, Vice Chair Burton?
Um, while I, I've read all the comments, um, and personal feelings have to be removed from the situation. And I'm absolutely sympathetic towards the whole situation. However, I can make all the findings based on our parameters that have been set forth, um, that we have to abide by legally. So, yeah, I can make the findings to make a recommendation of approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is Chair Antivarius. And I'm just gonna concur with my other commissioners' comments that very, I, it actually Vice Chair Burton summed it up very well. Sympathetic to this situation, but having to remove ourselves, that we cannot make a decision on, on emotions. Commissioner Best said this is tough. So what I have done is I have gone back and I have read. I, I wanted to state again that I read all of the letters of opposition. Um, I can make the findings, the three findings required to move this forward to the Board of Supervisors. And where I'm getting that from is Ms. Bingham, in her analysis on, of this case, I believe that she has outlined, I'm going through it even now as I speak, I believe she has outlined it very well, how every one of these three findings can be met. And I agree with them, and therefore I will be voting, um, to move this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. With that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, make a recommendation of approval for zone change, ZC twenty-two zero one eight to the Board of Supervisors.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton, a second by Commissioner Ruggles, uh, for a recommendation of approval for ZC two-two dash zero one eight. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Nay.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Antivarius, and I also vote aye. Uh, this case will be moved forward to the Board of Supervisors with a re- recommendation of approval from this commission. The next item on the agenda this evening is case number CUP two-two dash one zero nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe, uh, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. Looks like Bob is starting to share his screen. Uh, this case is a conditional use permit for a community center, um, where, uh, where the property owner could conduct outdoor classes on a nine-point-two acre parcel in the G-zone, and this is generally in the Red Lake area. So Bob, if you could please give your report.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, are you able to hear me and see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. All right, this case is the Mighty Goats Community Center, CUP twenty-two z- one zero nine. Uh, in this case, the applicant is, and property owner, is Lisa Scow, Williams, Arizona. Location of the property is at four-one-six East Nighthawk Lane in Red Lake. The size of the property is nine-point-two-two acres and the zoning is general. It's a ten-acre minimum parcel size. The request is a conditional use permit for a community center to conduct classes at a goat sanctuary. Um, the classes would be for grades K through twelve students, where they would learn about all aspects of health, including nutrition, dental hygiene, forming healthy relationships, and creating healthy environments. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. As you can see, this is on Highway, uh, six, State Route sixty-four, going north toward Valley, right through Red Lake. There's the actual Red Lake right there, Hocker Road, SB Road, uh, run just a short distance north. And the property is on this Grand Canyon Railroad frontage road, but actually Nighthawk runs right through here. And that is a private street that serves these four parcels that were of the subject of a parcel split back in nineteen ninety-five. And this is an arrow photo showing the property. You can again see the Grand Canyon frontage road. You can see Nighthawk. And you can see the various driveways off to the, the four parcels that were created with that split back in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, note that Nighthawk does not go in past these four parcels. The proposal is for, uh, classes that would be held two days a week, from Monday through Friday. Not on weekends, not on Saturday or Sunday. These would be, uh, schoolchildren that would be going to school and, and just be doing a field trip to, to, uh, to go to these classes. They would be two to three hours long at, at maximum per day. Uh, a maximum of, according to the applicant's narrative, uh, twenty-five students and staff would attend the classes. Uh, however, as we looked at this with the Environmental Quality Division, they indicated that the septic tank on the property, there is actually a bathroom at the barn where the classes would take place, that that would only support a maximum of ten students and staff per day. Uh, as an option, the applicant could either expand the wastewater system or they could provide one portable toilet, uh, for, to support the twenty-five students and staff. And I did want to mention that for, for these things that are related to the Environmental Quality Division, those are not in the purview of either the Planning Commission or even planning staff. Uh, this is a permit that would come from the Environmental Quality Division. These are some of the conditions of approval. Uh, the buses and staff vehicles would park in dedicated parking places on the property. Uh, and they would not park on, on Nighthawk Lane or on Grand Canyon Frontage Road. And either of those places, they would need to remain on the property. Um, a landscape waiver, uh, would be approved by the commission through the conditions uh, to retain existing natural landscaping. This is a natural neighborhood. The primary use of this house is, I mean, this property is still for residents. This is just something that, that would happen a couple of times a week. Uh, so primarily, this is just a residence. There is a sign waiver, uh, and that would allow the sign to be raised from normally, what is normally six feet, a limit to twelve feet in height. And, uh, the applicant is proposing a nine- And the applicant is proposing a nine-foot-square sign, so that's also conditioned. Normally, they could have a twelve-square-foot sign. That would be the maximum, but in this case, they they get a higher sign. And but the square footage would be limited to nine square feet. Fire coverage is required, and I have I have provided some information about that in your staff report. A letter from the fire chief indicating that that will be provided, and the fire chief would also need to approve the roads and indicate that they are capable of supporting public safety vehicles that might have to visit the site in case of an emergency. Also put a five-year term on the on this CUP. This is the signage plan. The applicant currently has a signed permit in and waiting for this approval to approve that. So basically, this is higher because it's about twelve feet to get up here to this part of the barn. But it's a pretty small sign. It's not going to be very visible. I measured about two hundred feet from Nighthawk Lane, so would not be something that would be very visible or impactful to the neighborhood. Site plan showing the subject property. This is Nighthawk Lane here. This is Grand Canyon Frontage Road coming in here. And this this would be the parking area. It would be an improved parking area for the the vehicles. The bus would actually come in and park on this circle driveway, so they can circle back around and go back out. And possibly some of the cars might park here as well. This is the barn where the classes would take place and the corral where the sheep are. And this is the this is the septic system that exists in the barn right now. They would only support, according to Environmental Quality Division, ten people per day. This is a picture of the barn. This is from the south side. It's actually looking back toward the east, but this is the south side of the barn, and this is the goat pen right here. And these are some of the goats at the goat sanctuary that would be helping out with the classes. And this is another picture from the south side of the barn. Anyway, in terms of citizen participation, the applicant held a virtual neighborhood meeting on November second, twenty-twenty-two. Five owners commented, and all comments were supportive, according to the applicant. Staff has not received any comments on this case. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. I've addressed each of these in the staff report, along with the findings for a waiver, both the landscaping waiver and the signage waiver. With that, staff recommends approval of C CUP twenty-two one-zero-nine with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This is Chair Ontiveras. I am not seeing any hands raised. Oh, yep. Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Didn't want to disappoint you there. Sorry. Mr. Short, I'm reviewing the packet and comparing that with the PowerPoint, and there are conditions for the approval in the packet that are not incorporated in your PowerPoint. And I wonder, one of them was a traffic impact statement was going to be required.
Commissioner Wilson, that, and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't clarify it that way, but that was a sample of the most important conditions. There are, yes, other conditions in the staff report.
Okay, I also noticed in your PowerPoint that you said it would be no more than twice per week, but in the narrative from the applicant, it says once per week. Can you clarify which is the correct circumstance?
I think after I had, and we can let the the applicant clarify as well, her original request was to was to have it twice per week. And I think with the issue with the septic, she she had, she wanted to cut it back to once per week. And I believe there's a timeline for that, but that's a, you know, that's a good point the applicant can make. We would like to support, you know, with the wastewater system and everything working out, using portable toilets if she needs to. We'd like to certainly support to twice a week if that's something that she would be interested in.
Okay, and also in the stat or in the packet, it shows that the applicant has already contracted with High Country Fire and Rescue, yet that's a condition in the CUP. Is there a reason why we would do that if if that contract already exists?
Commissioner Wilson, yes, so that would be a standing condition. So if we look back at the like the if the commission approves this, it turns into a resolution from the commission. So if we wanted to look back later at the requirements for the conditional use permit, the conditions, then we would want to look and say, yes, she is required to keep that fire service as long as its use is 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 being conducted. So it's something that kind of keeps riding along with it. It it's a documentation that this is required so that in a year or two, it sometimes fire service can be dropped, you know, so that that could happen. That's to prevent that from happening.
If fire service were dropped, how would the county ever know?
Uh, the fire chief might contact us. There are many things that I have to say, like, Mr. Wilson, there are many things we don't know if it counts. There are many, many things, but we do our best.
Okay, and and just as a general comment, the conditions of approval that are listed on your PowerPoint in the future, I would, I personally would like to see all of them listed if we're going to be voting on them and making them fact. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And I will say, I don't always put, and I think a lot of a lot of staff, we do not always put conditions in our PowerPoint. And the reason for that is that you have the staff report, and you can see all of them, and sometimes that gets tedious if you put, you know, all the conditions in the PowerPoint. So sometimes if I see important ones that I'll put those up. So that's the reason that you don't see all the conditions there. Sometimes I don't put the conditions in at all in in the presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best.
Thank you. Bob, I I don't think that we have an ordinance in the county that controls noise. Is that correct? And we don't have a condition so far, so I'm considering putting in our standard fifty decibels. It's not covered in another way, is it?
Commissioner Best, I don't know of anything. It is not covered in this case. I think the distance, you know, it's classes and the distance, this is very large, a lot zoning. I didn't really see it as being an issue, but we can certainly put that in. It is required in certain instances, like we talked about before, like campgrounds, for example, so we can certainly put that in.
Yeah. Well, in this case, I think the the neighbors have had a shot at it, but neighbors can change and there are, I'm looking at the structures on the on the parcel viewers, and they are a hundred feet apart across the property line, so that's not very far. So I'll just take care of that later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
Okay, Mr. Short, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Commissioner Best, yours is still up, but I'm thinking you're, you've completed your comments. And so I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission. If so, I would like you to state your name and address for the record, and I would also like to ask you if you have received the staff report, and if you do agree with the conditions it contains.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Scow, and I live at four-one-six East Nighthawk Lane, Williams, Arizona, eight-six-zero-four-six. I have read the staff report. I'd like to make two quick comments to Commissioner Best. With regard to decibels, I just want to assure the commissioners that there will be no microphone that is used during these lessons at Mighty Goat Health Education Center. That could address some of the the sound issues. And I'd like to address Mr. Wilson as far as if the fire agreement was dropped by High Country Fire and Rescue, I would contact the county. Safety is absolutely the most important issue when anyone comes to Mighty Goat Health Education Center. As far as agreeing with all of the conditions of approval, the staff report, I have two issues. All right, one question and another is an issue. Two questions regarding needing more information regarding a traffic impact statement. I would ask that the Department of Community Development give me more information about what needs to be in that traffic impact statement before I hire a an engineering firm. And also regarding the drainage requirement, the barn was built with a permit, and I assume that the drainage requirements associated with the building of the barn were addressed with that permit. So I would need to know from the Department of Community Development what additional requirements are needed regarding drainage, information regarding drainage near the barn. And then finally, my biggest concern has to do with the wastewater assessment, how the assessment was conducted as far as the numbers used. I don't think that what was included in that assessment with regard to ten people per day, being able to use the toilet in the barn, I don't believe that that assessment done with the
Ms. Scow, this is Chair Ontiveras. For whatever reason, I am not hearing you any longer. Mr. McNeely, are you?
Madam Chair, no, I am not. Yeah, the applicant just dropped off there. Bob, do you see? Okay, I think she's back.
Oh, Ms. Ms. Scow, this is Chair Ontiveras. And for whatever reason, for a period of time, on you, you were, we couldn't hear you. Where you left off in your comments was you were talking about the wastewater requirements. I believe you left off that there's going to be ten people.
Okay, let me be very quick then. I don't think that the equation that was used to determine the wastewater assessments considered the low-flow toilet that is in the barn, which does not require five gallons per flush. I would request that there be a reassessment of the wastewater and septic system, and that that be something that, as far as the conditions of approval, it be amended. And that is, those are my final comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to ask if any. Um, well, what I'm going to do is, Mr. Short, would you please address the applicant's questions regarding the drainage? And regarding on, so it was the drainage and the traffic, traffic impact statement.
Madam Chair, yes, I can do that. So they, and we can look at those. I think everyone can see my screen right there, the conditions. Let me look at those. Okay, so first one's number two. Buses and staff shall utilize the dedicated parking areas on the site, shall not park on the street. On-site driveways and parking areas and all requirements related to drainage shall be approved by the engineering supervisor. So the this is, like I mentioned before, well, in this case, this is in the purview of the engineering supervisor. So he looks at their driveway. Can this support the buses? Can this support the cars? Is drainage adequate on this site? So that would be in the purview of our engineering supervisor to decide that, and we can, and there's nothing in some sense set in stone with it, with this. It's up to him to look at it and say this meets county requirements.
Hey, Bob, this is this is Jess with with Community Development Staff as well. I will add to that, you know, that's managed by our Community Development Department Engineering Supervisor. However, the county does have the EDCM, the Engineering Design Construction Manual, which has which is the adopted engineering manual for the county on at what point do drainage improvements need to be made? At what point do grading grading permits have to be have to be pulled? So this is very much just a permitting issue. This is not discretionary. This would be like no, just like any other development on any other property in order to accommodate the use that the applicant has asked for. If if there are permits that are required through the Community Development Engineering Division, then they are required, just like any other development. So just didn't want this to, you know, any any false impression here that this is any person's opinion. This is all as as regulated by the EDCM. So, yeah, whatever is necessary to develop the property in accordance with the EDCM will be will be necessary. If no permits are required, great. If if permits are required, then then they are required. Thank you.
Right, so the this, so the engineering supervisor is is the person who looks at the standards and determines whether or not they have been met. So that, and the same thing as we move along to the traffic impact statement, this this came from our from the Assistant County Engineer at Public Works Department. So we would, we would want to work with him and determine exactly the applicant and staff could assist with that. Work with that with the Assistant County Engineer to determine exactly what kind of scope would be required here, based on, as Mr. McNeely just said, the the EDCM.
You're right. And and just to 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 bolster that, as the applicant, as the applicant asked, what are the standards? The standards for a TIS, a traffic impact statement, are clearly clearly in the EDCM. And and an engineer working for the applicant can can follow the EDCM, the standard engineering practice, to do a traffic in traffic impact statement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short and Mr. McNeely. And on, I would also like to ask that you address the the wastewater. The applicant, I I do not know this. This is out of the purview of this commission. Um. But is a low-flush toilet, is the water use with that taken into consideration when these conditions were made?
Madam Chair, I can't, I can't answer that directly, but I do know that a one-point-six-gallon toilet is something that has been standard for a long time. I'm not sure what exactly, what kind of toilet Mrs. Scow has. But this was a recently approved wastewater system. And the Environmental Quality Division, they have complete access to this. They approved this. And they have looked at this and said that this system was not designed for twenty-five people a day. Now, and I mean, the Mrs. Scow can certainly talk to that division and and ask questions and ask about whether or not they had looked at what kind of toilet she was using. But he did have an analysis. I did provide that to Mrs. Scow yesterday about the the analysis that was made that that came to this determination.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. And so that is something that is outside the purview of this commission. So with that, I'm going to ask if any commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time. Not seeing any, I'm going to open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening, please raise your hand or unmute. I will call on you. Please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I do see a Michael McCauley. Mr. McCauley, please go ahead.
This is Michael McCauley. I have the Perrin Ranch. My address is P O Box three-six-five, Williams, Arizona, eight-six-zero-four-six. That's the address of the ranch. I have two main concerns. Mr. Short, I'm going to please ask you to restate where you said the proposed, the proposed sign is to be located.
Okay, Mr. McCauley, let me, let me show you where that would be. Okay, so it'd be, see, this is the barn right here. So it'd be right here on the barn in that location. We can, let me pull up the Right here, so it'd be right here on the barn in that location, we can, when we pull up the.
Thank you, I, I wouldn't, it wasn't clear to me before, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
The other, the other concern I have is, uh. What Ms. Skow is going to do with her barn wastes? And the reason why I'm asking that question is recently, and. You know, I'm not gonna say it's her, cuz I, I, I don't believe it is, uh, but I am having several. Individuals with barns and their barn wastes tend to, tends to end up on me on the ranch. On SP Road or on some of the side roads that are open from SP Road. And then they're not hauling it to town because that's a 14 mile round trip. They tend to bring it out on me.
And, uh, Mr. McCauley, that, um, this is a 10 acre par- parcel. And there are regulations for how you keep animals on a parcel such as this. Uh, there's a limit to the, the amount of animals that you can have, it's pretty high in this case, actually, because there are 10 acres here. Uh, it did not, I did not see that the number of goats she had would, would come anywhere near. The amount that would be allowed in terms of managing waste. Uh, that is something, we do have a division called An- Animal Management that, that looks into those issues. But we could certainly put a condition in if, uh, the commissioner would like to address that issue.
Yeah, my, my main concern is when you start getting animal waste from other areas. And, and the, the straw that's dumped and that sort of thing. Uh, it can contain diseases, it can be picked up by livestock as well as wildlife, so it is a concern.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Short, for that explanation, and thank you, Mr. McCauley. And what, uh, what we are going to do is I am going to ask the applicant if, uh, she will explain. And I believe she wants to because I do see her hand raised. Ms. Skow, would you please explain how you will be dealing with the waste on your property?
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. McCauley, for that question. And I've had two mini donkeys and four goats for the past seven months, and I. Spread the manure and the straw on the outer portion of my property. I would never, ever. Put that waste on anyone else's property, I sp- spread it throughout the property so that it is, um, it is away from the barn. And it is not something that I would ever again, uh, spread on your property or anyone's property.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Skow, for that explanation. Um, I am going to ask again if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on the case this evening. And seeing none, I'm going to close it to public co- uh, public comment and open it at Commission. Discussion, Commissioner Ruggles, would you please start?
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first things first, uh, and we'll get the simple stuff out of the way here, the sign. Is actually 7.1 square feet area. Um, and I think the way it is located is, uh, pretty innocuous. Uh, the second thing is that, um, I really question the need. Or necessity. Or the requirement for a traffic impact statement. This is not on a county road. Uh, the frontage road coming in from SB Road is not a county maintained road. So, and of course, they're on a private road. And when you consider the number of other properties that are served by SB. Uh, and the folks accessing those properties off of, uh, 64. Um, I think that, uh. I really have to say this is pretty questionable. And, uh, I could not make the case for this. Other than that, um, I can make the findings for this case, uh, as presented by staff. Uh, the other thing I do have to state is that I visited the site, uh, with Mr. Short. Um, I did not meet the applicant, so there was no ex parte discussion or conversation. Uh, involved with that visit. So I'll turn it over to the rest of the commission at this point.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, um, Mr. Mr. Short, I'm gonna ask at this time. This commission, do we even have the, um, the ability to remove condition number six? Regarding the traffic impact statement, or is that outside of the purview of this commission?
Uh, Madam Chair, I would say it's outside the purview of the commission, however, we can certainly discuss this of, you know, Steph. Steph does see this as not having, um, really large traffic impacts. Uh, it does. Grand Canyon Frontage Road comes off of, uh, what is it, I believe Hockt Road, I can go up to see. But, uh, off, off of a county maintained road, and I think that's where. Uh, the Assistant County Engineer was coming from on this. But we could certainly have a discussion with him and, um, and decide the scope of what be, would be required here if, if anything.
Okay, okay, thank you, on, uh, continuing on with Commission Discussion, Commissioner Williams.
Um, okay, I tend to agree with Commissioner Ruggles that the traffic impact statement seems a little silly. Um, but other than that, this. Uh, I can make the findings and I love goats, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Williams, uh, Commissioner Best.
I agree about the t- uh, traffic impact analysis, uh, I'm very enthusiastic about this case. This is the second one we've had in two months, and it's just a testament to. Uh, how well we take care of our kids in our community, uh, and I can make the findings, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Commissioner Wilson.
I would like to join the majority here and oppose the requirement for a traffic impact statement. I think a bus and a couple of cars once or twice a week is not going to justify the cost necessary for the applicant to. Do a traffic impact statement. Um, and I would also question whether a, uh, the addition made by Mr. Short already of the noise prohibition. Um, you know, 50 dB at the property line when the barn is at the minimum setback. Could be a goat doing that, are we going to count the goat's noise as not exceeding 50 dB? Um, this is wide open space, once or twice a week during the normal, you know, workday. There might be some people there. I, I, you know, even the city of Flagstaff that has a noise ordinance allows, you know, pretty significant noise during normal hours. And trying to add another criteria here that they have to jump through or prove or not prove. Um, I, I'm not sure I see any value to that, so, otherwise I can make the findings and I'm happy to do so.
All right, okay, Vice Chair Burton.
Um, I think it's a great project, I, I love goats too, so, um. I think anything with the kids outside is a good thing. Um, I. I honestly would kind of agree with Commissioner Wilson on the 50 DBA, given. You know, that's not that much over regular talking, so, um, I don't know if that's something that we can. Kind of just elaborate on or, or up or something, because if this is gonna be going on during regular business hours. Odds are they're not gonna be disturbing anyone anyway, so. Um, I wouldn't mind expanding the conversation on that a little bit, but, uh, I can, I can totally make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Burton, okay, um, this is Chair Ontiveras, and. I think this is a great project, a really, really great project, and I'm glad to see it going in. I think there is good purpose behind it. Um, I think the applicant has done a very good job here, uh, in her presentation and what she, in laying out her narrative. So what I would like to do is I'm gonna ask again, Mr. Short, I, as you, as you've heard the comments. The commissioners. No one feels that six needs to be in there, but you're saying that this commission cannot remove that, correct?
Um, Madam Chair, this was a requirement of the, like I said, Assistant, Assistant County Engineer. I think that what staff can do is work with the Assistant County Engineer and. And, uh, and see if we can reduce the scope or just have this removed altogether. Because I think that, that's, that was my, certainly my indication looking at this is that. Uh, a bus and a few cars making a left turn out there on the highway. Twice a week was not much traffic, so, so we can certainly put them on that.
Hey, Madam Chair, Bob, this is, this is Jess McNeely with County Staff, I, I think one, I think one way that we could meet the intent. Of, um, of, of the commissioners, uh, in this discussion, and, and I get it. Um, the, um, the county assistant engineer, uh, wanted, wanted this TIS. It is the EDCM that regulates, uh, the EDCM, if, if a TIS is required, the TIS would be required. Whether this, um, conditional use permit required it or not. So I think possibly a better way to make a condition on the conditional use permit. Is that a, uh, TIS meeting the scope of the county engineer, um, shall be provided if required by the county engineer. If the applicant, um, uh, completed case, uh, with or without the assistance of, of an engineer. Um, working for the applicant, uh, they could certainly go to a lesser level of just a traffic statement. You know, a statement of, uh, of what vehicles at what weight would be hap- would be, um. Uh, coming to the site on, on what frequency of a basis. And, um, that can be a step down, we have seen that work with, um, with the county engineer before. So I think, um, uh, again, i- if the county engineer is gonna require, they're gonna require whether, whether this. Whether this CUP requires it or not, so I, I think, um, having it flexible in here with this, um, with the CUP. Might be helpful to the applicant to possibly bypass this, this expense. Um, uh, if, uh, if the county engineer can be convinced otherwise, so, so there wouldn't be a requirement of the CUP.
Okay, um, Mr. Short, can you, uh, or maybe you already did, uh, can you modify that condition?
Yes, I think this is the, I think this is what we're, what, uh, Mr. McNeely is saying, if we cry, if, if it's required. By the, here, there we go.
Okay, and you know what, here we are, we're going back because I'm showing number six. As being, um, we're having, um, our numbers aren't matching up here.
So this is just.
Oh, I see, yeah.
At this point, Madam Chair, so, you can decide to remove that if they'd like.
All right, got you, okay, myself included with Commissioner Burton and Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Burton and Commissioner Wilson. That makes three of us that don't really feel we need to have that 50, uh. Uh, DBA noise level there, but I do wanna go back and I wanna ask Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Williams. And I went, I already know what Commissioner Best is gonna say, but Commissioner Williams, cuz you, could you please, uh, add your comments on that?
Um, yeah, I think it's fine to take that out.
Okay, and Commissioner Ruggles.
Yeah, having visited the site and, uh, taken a look at the, uh, terrain and how the buildings are situated. Uh, and being a. Somebody who is really cognizant of, uh, noise levels. And having spoken on this before to a considerable extent. I do not think that is necessary for the application or the location here, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, um, Commissioner Wilson, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Chair, I, um, would like to just jump back real quick to the traffic impact statement. If I understood, uh, Mr. McNeely correctly, whether we put this in here or not, it's entirely, um. The, it, this is within the scope of the county engineer, and the requirement will or will not exist depending upon their interpretation. So us adding this in here is just redundant, and, and for that reason, I would suggest it, it doesn't need to be there at all. Thank you.
Um, okay, this is Chair Ontiveras, I'm, okay, so this is kind of a sticky thing here. Because none of the commissioners think that this should be in here at all, like, but. We are being told that we do not have the ability to remove it. So, according to, the way it's written now, a traffic impact statement meeting the scope of the county engineer. Shall be provided if required, and any improvements identified by the TIS shall be completed by the applicant. Um, I think that what Mr. McNeely's intent was here by putting in those two words, if required, um. Is to give the applicant, is, I guess, to go back and say to the county engineer, okay, is it really required? Am I right with that, Mr. McNeely?
Madam Chair, this is Jess McNeely with staff, yes, that, that puts it, um, that, that does make a link of the use. Um, uh, this commission being able to approve conditional use permits for the use of the community center. On the site, um, with conditions, um, and it does, it does make a tie to all necessary. If, all necessary permits, uh, required by other regulations outside of the zoning ordinance, if required. Um, we feel that having this condition, um, is, is a good connection. Because, um, otherwise, the, uh, the Engineering Division or the Public Works Staff is not aware. Uh, necessarily of the, of the use being permitted on the site that would then trigger a, um, uh, an engineering permit.
Okay. I'm a, I'm a little, I, I'm not connecting the dots here because we know what vehicles are gonna be there, we already know that. Um, has the engineer actually looked at this? Or is this just a, something that was just put in there because it's kind of one of the boilerplate conditions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the, the, uh, the engineering supervisor has looked at this, and, uh, that's the Community Development Engineering Supervisor. And he checked with, uh, Public Works Assistant County Engineer. And, um, and the Assistant County Engineer, uh, was sure that they did want this in the conditional use permit. So that there would be a tie of the conditional use permit, the use that's permitted to, um. To their regulation, the EDCM, uh, that they see as, as requiring a TIS. Uh, but that, uh, that, that, in that permitting process, the applicant or the applicant's engineer is, is fully. Uh, fully has the right to go to, um, uh, to go to that permitting agency. And, um, and demonstrate what they see is, is meeting, meeting that regulations requirements.
Okay, okay, I, I do understand it now. Uh, and based on that, I do like, I, I personally would like to still have those two words, if required, left in there. But, um. That certainly, I'm certainly open to the other commissioners', um, points on this, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I'm in, completely in favor of leaving the, uh, the words if required in there, if we have to have it in there. But in the past, and I bet, I remember so many of these cases that are similar to this. We have not had requirements like this, and typically, when we have had requirements like this. The use has been, uh, something that either the code requires, uh, access or immediate access from a county maintained road. And when it is not on a county maintained road, this is something new, we have not required. Uh, anything like this, uh, for something in a relatively remote area compared to, uh. Just getting off of Highway 64 and going down, uh. Um, SB Road for probably about 100 feet. So, uh, I just have to state that, uh, this is, uh, I don't know. Some people would call bureaucratic nonsense, the tail wagging the dog, I don't know what else you wanna call it, but that's my point of view on this.
No, and, and I, and I do, I, I absolutely get it, like what I was thinking was. Uh, this is Chair Ontiveras, is that condition just isn't passing the common sense sniff test. We got a bus going out there, a couple cars, you know, once a week. It, it just is not passing the common sense sniff test, and, um. I like common sense, I love common sense, and this, I, I'm, I'm really not liking this condition in here at all. But. Uh, say it again, Mr. McNeely, this commission cannot remove it at this time. Right?
Well, um, Madam Chair, uh. That, that's a tough one. that, that's a tough one. I, I would suggest that we, that we partner with our partners over in the Public Works Department with the Assistant County Engineer. Where ultimately traffic from this site that would be increased beyond, um, that of a, of a permitted by right, single family home, um, does access a, a county maintained road and that then accesses a, um, uh, an ADOT maintained highway. Uh, and there's, there has been increased concern in this corridor about that flow of traffic and continued increase flow of that traffic. Um, w- we would like to partner with our partners over at Public Works. Public Works, the Assistant County Engineer was pretty adamant because I questioned this. I questioned the exact same question that I'm hearing from all of the commissioners here. Um, I, my preference is a less is more preference that, um, if, if this is required elsewhere by the EDCM, um, let the EDCM require that in some permitting process. Uh, um, the Assistant County Engineer, um, who is it, who is a traffic guy and formerly, formerly worked, uh, for ADOT actually, um, uh, wanted, wanted this requirement tied to the use. So we are trying to partner with them. I think the, if, I, I understand the, um, the discussion of bureaucratic nonsense and, and we will pass that on. I wish, I wish our public works partners were with us on these evening meetings. Um, but, um, uh, I, I might, my preference is, uh, you know, this is not a requirement of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the zoning ordinance does not require, uh, T, TISs or TIAs. That, that's the purview of the EDCM. Um, I will tell you that we are working very hard. Staffs change all the time. Emphasis changes. Um, uh, but we are try, we are working very hard to, uh, partner with Public Works and if partnered, if Public Works is, is adamant about having some review of this, and I would be optimistic that it's simply a, um, a simple review and, and no improvements required, um, that we, that we partner with them, uh, that it just, it helps them in their work. And, and I get that. However, if the, if the commission would prefer to not have this, this, um, this condition in here at all, we can pass that on to Public Works and let them know that this, this is not something that is listed in the zoning ordinance as possible conditions. Um, therefore, the, uh, the commission opted to, um, to not have this condition on, on this conditional use permit.
Okay. And I also think that Commissioner Ruggles has made a very good point. And that we've not, we have not imposed this condition on any like or similar, um, applicants. And so, you know, it, it, it could even have, it could even sniff of being arbitrary for that matter. So yes or no, can we remove it?
Madam Chair, you can, you can remove it. Um, you can certainly remove it, um, if you would like to. Um, we're going to refer this applicant, um, uh, uh, directly to Public Works and, 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 and let, um, our engineering division and Public Works work with them. Um, and, and, and try and use their tools, um, if necessary, uh, without a connection to the conditional use permit, um, to require, um, a TIS if they feel it's necessary.
Okay, okay. So Commissioner Wilson, I saw your hand raised first.
Thank you. And I, I'm glad we finally got a clear answer to what, what seems like a pretty simple question. Can we remove it? Um, I was going to suggest that we ask council since they're here, um, whether we legally can remove it or not. It was difficult for me to understand as a commission how we can't decide what does and does not go into the document that we are approving or, or the, the, the permit that we're approving. I also during this conversation went back and looked at a very similar project that we approved last month. And there was no traffic impact statement required there either. So I'm, I'm supporting what, um, Commissioner Ruggles said earlier. Uh, there's just no reason for this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Ruggles.
Yes, and I'd like to, uh, just add a little bit to this by saying that, uh, one of the primary guidelines, uh, this dates back to, uh, uh, Euclid VAMOR in that, uh, zoning and conditions that go with it. Primarily zoning, uh, is a legitimate police power of the state, but it cannot be arbitrary or capricious. And that to me makes, uh, an adequate argument for removing this from the, uh, uh, conditions for this use.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. It, it seems that there is consensus among the commissioners that six be removed. So, uh, Mr. Short, if you could remove that, um, well, it's going to be six because we're going to remove, uh, number three as well about the decibels. Okay, so now I want all of the commissioners to very carefully look at these, uh, commission, uh, conditions as I am as well. And okay, I, this is Chair Antivarius. I am satisfied. Uh, can you move, move it up, Mr. Short, please? All right, thank you. This is Chair Antivarius. I am satisfied with the conditions as stated now. If any commissioner is not, please raise your hand. All right. I believe that we have now completed, um, our commission discussion, so I will accept a motion in a second, please, on this.
Madam Chair, I would, uh, propose or, um, motion that we approve CUP twenty-two dash one zero nine as presented currently.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP two-two dash zero one nine with conditions as stated. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, just for the record, you said CP two-two zero one nine and I'm, I'm seeing one zero nine, so.
Yes, and that is correct. It's CUP two-two dash one zero nine, yes.
Aye.
Okay, um, and thank you for that, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
And this is Chair Antivarius. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The final item, let's see, on the agenda this evening for the cases is CUP two-three dash zero zero five.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is Jess with Community Development Staff and this is a, um, conditional use permit for, um, that Zach Schwartz is managing and I see he already has his screen shared. So go ahead, Zach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. In this case is CUP twenty-three zero zero five. The applicant is Ian Braun of Civil Design and Engineering. The property owners are Meteor Crater Inc. and Bar T Bar Inc. Properties located just south of Meteor Crater Exit on I forty. And there are two different zones for the three parcels involved with this request. Um, they are the CG ten thousand, that's commercial general zone, uh, and the general zone. Uh, the property size, uh, the property being used of all three parcels involved is nine point four three acres. And this request is for an RV park, Fuel Island and associated employee housing. So here's a vicinity map across your screen. Here is I forty coming east from Flagstaff and just past Two Guns is the Meteor Crater Exit here. Uh, the subject properties are these three parcels and, uh, you'll see on the aerial that I'll show soon uh, how the RV park and associated uses requested sort of cover pieces of all three. Um, and this is fairly well north of actual Meteor Crater. Everything in the white you see here on the screen, that's general zone. This is a checkerboard, uh, state land area. So state land is in blue. And we have, uh, the various tribes, uh, have reservation land in the brown. For some details on the request, uh, this is for a seventy-one unit RV park. Fourteen of the units, uh, are full service, meaning they have electrical and wastewater hookups. Uh, fifty-seven of the units have only water and electrical hookups. And the property does include a wastewater dump station for those units that do not have a direct uh, wastewater hookup. The entire wastewater system for the property is actually in the process of a complete replacement. Uh, the Fuel Island is another part of the requested use and there's an associated convenience market with that. It's a geodesic dome. There's also a duplex which, uh, is currently serving as employee housing. And just to note that most of these uses are permitted by right in the CG ten thousand zone. And this CUP request is for, uh, the uses that are in the general zone areas, um, where these uses are not normally allowed in the general zone except for when they are within five hundred feet of a highway interchange. And I'll just go back to the map because I don't think I showed, there's a tiny piece of commercial zone. This, this red here is where many of the uses are permitted by right, as is. For some background on the case, uh, all of these uses were approved as currently requested in nineteen eighty-eight. And the original conditions of approval through the CUP were a conformance with the submitted site plan, narrative landscaping and parking plans. Uh, they were required to receive all required permits from other divisions of community development as well as Health Services District has some requirements, uh, related to RV parks. And, and Public Works had some requirements as far as access off of Meteor Crater Road. Um, there was also requirements in those conditions for construction of masonry enclosed dumpsters and improvement of internal roadways. The applicant did meet all of those conditions on their renewal, uh, through a conditional use permit in two thousand and one. And in two thousand and one, the, that use permit renewing all of these uses was set to expire in twenty sixteen. The applicant inadvertently allowed the use permit to expire and wasn't aware that it had expired because it had been, uh, quite a while since, uh, two thousand and one when they were approved. But staff has verified that all of the previous conditions had been met. I do have some property photos here. So, uh, this is for Meteor Crater Road. You can see the dome uh, that has been on the property. That's where a convenience market is located. Here is one of the Fuel Islands. And you can see from nineteen eighty-eight, the landscaping that was required at that time has really grown pretty mature and it looks really good on the property. This photo on the top right is just showing internal to the RV park. Here are some of the spaces. Um, here are one of two of a restroom area, but this, uh, sorry, in the bottom left is also an area for laundry. And on the right side, so this is looking internal to the park, looking at the back of the geodesic dome. So behind this dome would be the Fuel Island. This is the duplex here, the darker brown, which serves as employee housing for the site. Here's an aerial, so, um, this is most of the RV park is in the CG ten thousand zone, but a lot of this is spilling out. Uh, the geodesic dome, all that, uh, is spilling out onto this general zone property and also a bit of it onto these, this other general zone property, the state land directly to the south. And properties to the west and east are undeveloped in the general zone. Typically, it's a single family residential and agricultural zone with a ten acre parcel size minimum. What's the use that's occurring on most of this land is actually for ranching. And here is a slide of the site plan. I know it doesn't show up too well on this, uh, slide and it's in all of your packets and hopefully uh, you've been able to take a look and read it a little bit more closely than what's, I can show here. But, uh, this area right here on the north, this is their abandoned wastewater. They're currently, currently replacing it uh, in this area here. This is the dump station here. And then these, of course, all of these are the seventy-one RV spaces. Uh, the Fuel Island is here near the south and closer to Meteor Crater Road. Um, with the duplex for employee housing and the geodesic dome convenience market adjacent. As far as staff analysis, um, all of the required typical performance standards for RV parks of the zoning ordinance in section three point eighteen D, uh, are met by this application. And as previously stated, um, they've met all of their conditions of approval from previous conditional use permits um, since nineteen eighty-eight. They did, e- except for inadvertently allowing the use permit to expire in two thousand and sixteen. Um, staff has recommended two additional conditions that haven't shown up on the use permit before. One of those being recommended by the Urban Wildlife Planner and that is the requirements, uh, for the applicant to retrofit the existing four strand barbed wire that um, forms a perimeter around the nine plus acres for the RV park and associated uses. Um, another being that the applicant, uh, would be required to reseed the disturbed area for the wastewater as they're doing construction, uh, and disturbing some of the uh, soils in the area and that's in order to mitigate the spread of invasive weeds. Um, the applicant actually has emailed staff back, uh, today about those additional conditions. Staff did ask if they were okay with them. Um, and the applicants did agree that they were okay with those additional conditions. As far as long range plan compliance, uh, the Coconino County Comprehensive Plan uh, applies in this area. And I have more detail in the staff report about specific goals and policies related to this application. But just to summarize here, um, the comprehensive plan supports tourist-related economic development. It supports employee housing and it recommends adequate fire and emergency response. I don't think I mentioned it in the presentation, but in the staff report, uh, this property is within the Winslow Fire District, so it is covered there. As far as citizen participation, the applicant held a meeting on site on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven AM and they invited neighbors within a one thousand foot uh, radius of the subject property for comment on the proposal. And no neighbors attended that meeting and staff did not receive any comments from the public on their request either. As far as the required findings of fact, the commission is aware that you must make all four of these findings of fact in order to approve of this case. And I have detailed staff's responses to these findings of fact and staff is able to make all the required findings of fact. So with that, staff, uh, if the Planning and Zoning Commission can make the required findings of fact, staff does recommend approval of CUP twenty-three zero zero five, subject to the eight conditions uh, in the staff report. And I'm happy to bring those conditions up on the screen for you if you would all, uh, like to see them. But at this time, I'm happy to take any questions from the commission.
Okay, on, Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Antivarius. And I've got two quick questions. There is not an expiration date, so I'm thinking this is going to be a perpetual one?
That's what staff's recommending, yes.
Okay. And the other one that I have, I, just looking at the recommended conditions on this one, we've got condition number eight. Why is condition, why is that one in here?
Uh, Madam Chair, so this can, in lieu of an expiration date and just to reinforce the idea that there are ways of enforcing the conditions of approval. Um, the, that's, this doesn't necessarily need to be, and I don't know if you're seeing, am I sharing on the screen the conditions of approval here? Okay.
Uh, no, I'm actually looking at the ones in the staff report. The, the recommendation is, is what we're currently seeing on the screen.
Okay, let me go ahead and share those for everybody. So, right, um, so just to kind of continue on this condition, there are two ways of enforcing things, uh, or maybe more than that. But the main ways that our department enforces things is through the normal code compliance process. But for a conditional use permit, they can also, conditional use permits can be revoked coming back to this hearing body. So it was just to clarify that that process can be used. And that process applies whether or not this condition is here. So that could be removed if the commission pleases.
Okay, um, have they ever had any kind of a, like any mark upon their record at all? For bad.
There has not been.
Okay, um. All right, if if it were me, I would remove number eight, but uh, don't, don't take it out just yet because that's only my, that's just my question. And I do want to see what the other um commissioners have to say. So that ends my questions. And I'm going to go ahead and um Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, on on the issue that you just discussed, you know, uh, Commissioner uh Wilson mentioned earlier, who's actually checking up on this stuff? Uh, when we do these perpetual um CUPs, we don't in the county have a system for actually going out and taking a look that I'm aware of. Um, you know, that's why we that's, that's why we put dates on these uh so they don't last forever. And at some point, we get to take a look and make sure that they are uh doing what they're supposed to do. I I wouldn't argue against a perpetual uh CUP, but I think that it sends a message. And and I think it's a good message to send. And I hope someday in the future we figure out how to check up on CUPs. Question uh on page seventy-two and I can't identify it any better than that in my packet. Uh, there's some discussion about additional conditions and then it says they are not necessary. And I'm just wondering why that conclusion was reached. We had two similar cases uh last month, uh last couple of months, uh, one on eighty-nine and then one on uh sixty-four, the uh trailer park with the fire department. And we put in quite a few uh of these sort of educational conditions and seems like this is pretty similar. I mean, there are either tourists are gonna be here. Uh, some of them will be towing OHVs and um, they'll be going out on the land, uh adjacent land uh is, some of it is uh fine. I'm sure the ranch land doesn't mind if folks on their property wander, but there's tribal land, there's state land and uh across the high, across the highway, there's a even uh some city of Flagstaff land right across the tracks. And I don't know why city of Flagstaff owns that. Is that Red Gap Ranch out there? But anyway, there are, there are jurisdictions where folks should not wander. So I, I have got the list in front of me here and I'll I don't know what the appropriate time to go over it is, but uh I would like to see some of the educational elements in there and and in particular, in this case, uh, letting folks know where they should go and where it's inappropriate for them to go. And I happy to do that now or later, so.
Okay, um Commissioner Best, um, we're, we're still at staff presentation at this. We're in questions with staff. Why don't you hold that uh for commission discussion? Okay?
Okay.
And um Commissioner Ruggel, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have anything further?
Um. I do not. Thank you very much.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Best. Um. All right, I don't see any other questions on or hands raised. And I will just say on that one, Mr. Schwartz, that I choose my battles carefully. So on removing number eight on your explanation of, hey, this is going to be perpetual. So this is just kind of an underscore to say you gotta follow all the directions. I get that on. And then there's another part of me that says we have an applicant that doesn't even have the slightest mark on their record. And it seems almost insultive, but we're, we're just leave it in there and we're going to let the other commissioners weigh in on that one. So I'm trying to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present this evening? If so, would you please state your name and address for the record? And I would like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions it contains.
Madam Chair, this is Ian Braun uh with Civil Design and Engineering. My address is six one eight East Route sixty-six, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero one. Um, I am the applicant. I am representing the Meteor Crater Corporation. In this case, I reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval with the owner. Uh, earlier this week, we agree with everything and we'd just like to thank the commission for their time and thank uh Coconino County staff for doing a great job, as always, and helping us out. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, uh, hold on just a minute and I'm going to see, do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Braun? Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
I will lower it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Best. Um, with that, Mr. Braun, I am not seeing any questions. So I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand or unmute. I'll call on you. You'll state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. And I am not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and uh close the public comment portion and open it up at commission level. Commissioner Ruggles, would you please?
Thank you. Madam Chair, um, first thing I have to do is to say that uh visited the site with uh Mr. Short. And a couple of comments on the site. One, it is uh a rather spacious facility for something like this. Extremely well maintained and I think the photos uh um go a long ways towards doing it justice in that respect. Second thing is uh number eight. Um, I think that is simply a matter of clarification. It says, uh, here's the portion of the uh ordinance that pertains should any question of enforcement arise. And I think that uh it simply uh says to the applicant, uh, um, here is what you uh need to know should something like that come along. Um, far better than to uh, uh, far better to leave it in there than to take it out for that reason, I think. As far as additional conditions such as we have imposed uh on other CUPs uh for RV parks uh, the sort of thing. Um, one of the things I did take a look at when we visited the site is the surrounding uh territories, surrounded country. And there's no evidence of OHV use. Um, at least uh none that is very apparent in that area. The other thing is uh, I was one of those OHV people for a lot of years in this state and as I said, uh, you've heard me say this before, this isn't exactly an OHV paradise out there. That is flat scrub desert country. And uh for the people that uh the current crop of OHV users, that's about as uninteresting as it gets in a lot of ways. Uh, no pine trees, uh, not pleasant uh place to go buzzing around during the summer, that sort of thing. So I'd just like the other commissioners to consider that when we uh talk about this a little bit more. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Um, Commissioner Williams.
Um, I'm, I'm in favor actually of leaving number eight in and um, I do you know, I understand what Commissioner Ruggles was saying, but also I kind of feel like moving forward with all these RV parks and campgrounds that regardless, maybe we should try to make some things more, a little more consistent. Um, I mean, maybe nobody will need education out there, but it seems like a small thing to add. So I guess I'd kind of like to see what Commissioner Best has to say more on that, but that's kind of where I am.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And Commissioner Best, uh, go ahead now during commission discussion and um go through your proposed additions.
Um, I will. Thank you very much. And let me say, you know, my philosophy in the, in looking at these cases and I've been in the chair a long time is that um things can change. You know, these are, this is Bar T Bar. We know who they are. They're our friends. They're rooted in the community. Uh, but things can be bought and things can be sold. And we could end up in any case, uh including the one that we just talked about. With the kids, uh, where, where it could change hands. And in that case, we could have someone who's less familiar with the area with our county and who needs a uh a s- strong set of conditions uh more than somebody we know and trust. And that can happen anytime. So I've got these conditions here. I'm looking at them. Uh, let me run down them real quick and I'll suggest the ones that I think may apply. You know, I, I don't know how much fuel is out there. Uh, the first condition is facility shall be staffed at all time, but times by personnel trained and equipped to extinguish fires as approved by the fire chief. Um, it's great that this is uh within the range of Winslow Fire Department. Is there enough fuel there to have that kind of a condition? I mean, can we, could we get a grass fire going there? That could be dangerous or not? Uh, Commissioner Ruggles, maybe chime in? I haven't, I haven't driven on the land in years.
Yes, in answer to your question.
Okay, well, let's, let's and uh oh great, it's on the screen. So let's go with the one. Uh, three is taken care of. That's the property shall be fenced. I would think that the, we want to ask them to consult the uh, the tribal areas and the state land managers, make sure that they don't want to put up any gates or fencing to, to make sure that folks don't go on the land uh inappropriately. So I let's put four in. This is what I'm suggesting now. And five is uh leave no trace. That's a real easy one. All you gotta do is pay to get some posters. Number six is considerably harder and I'm working on that with the Forest Service, trying to make it easy. I would put it in. Uh, seven, I think is important, given the land out there. Uh, there are it's not so much on the side of the road that uh the applicant is on, but if you just go across the highway, it gets very confused. What's tribal, what state? And ultimately, what the city of Flagstaff owns uh right across the railroad tracks, for whatever reason. So I put seven in um. I don't know that ten is necessary. You know, we did eleven uh remember Commissioner Williams uh has been buzzed enough time in the Grand Canyon. It's used right now in about eleven at uh two guns. I would put eleven in uh. You know, you could end up with helicopter tours.
Hey, uh, this, uh, Commissioner Best, I apologize for interrupting, but I hope it makes it just more for efficient before we start going through this. What we've determined is if a use would otherwise require a conditional use permit or a zone change or is not otherwise permitted, um, that's, that's creating a condition for a use that's not permitted on the property. If this applicant wants to have a helicopter pad, they're going to have to come back to um to the planning and zoning commission for a conditional use permit for a helicopter pad. That's actually, that actually requires a conditional use permit in all zones. So we are trying to keep this list.
I agree a hundred percent.
Focused. If something is not possible um in the given, you know, in this given situation, which it's not, the applicant has not asked for a conditional use permit for a helicopter pad. We really feel that that is um uh.
No, I, I agree. I agree a hundred percent. If, if they have to come back, then it shouldn't be on this list. Uh, so um and I'm kind of leaving the OICs off because I, you know, apparently we don't have a problem yet and I don't know how to solve that problem, to tell you the truth. So let's just let that go. Um. If there is something to burn out there, I think fourteen is important. And I think sixteen is important. Uh, the invasive weeds, I'm always trying to keep the weeds down. So that's uh one. Four, five, six, seven, fourteen and sixteen.
So and again, uh, Commissioner Best and and Madam Chair, on Zach, if you could scroll down for a second, on um items that are otherwise required by the zoning ordinance. So this this development, part of it is on um is on commercial zone property where it's permitted by right. Doesn't require a conditional use permit and it does spill onto the G-zone property. Uh, but it is within uh proximity of interchange of the highway, so it's eligible for a conditional use permit in that case. So this, this site is required to have a uh, have a landscape plan. I'm sure they would have a, they would have a, a very old one on file from when they first developed. That's well-developed site. The zoning ordinance um as a part of the landscape shut section of the zoning ordinance does require me weed mitigation and that does include um uh continual maintenance. So if we're going to add things that are otherwise required by the zoning ordinance and that's where I'm trying to keep things, you know, consistent with, with what I've been hearing from, from many commissioners. Um, if it's required elsewhere, we do want to wa- identify where it's required elsewhere. If this is a, a quote, put the applicant on notice type condition, end quote. Um, and we would like to refer to where that standard is. So if we're going to add uh established invasive weed removal plan as required by chapter, by se- um, as required in chapter four of zoning ordinance.
So are you, are you saying that when they do their landscape plan, they will have to have an invasive weed removal plan, in which case that condition should not be there. So let's.
And, and this, this is a, this is a unique case in that is a well-established. Um, they, they aren't coming in here for any building permits for development. Um, this is a well-established site. Uh, this is effectively a renewal of a, of a conditional use permit. Um, they are having to add a um a drain field for their onsite wastewater system. So that, that's the only permit that's required is an environmental quality permit. Um, but yeah, they um, the, you know, if, if our department were to receive a complaint that there were un- that where there were unmitigated weeds um on this site, we could act on that complaint. Um, ba- under the base of the zoning ordinance in that they have a, uh, they have a required landscape plan. They have, they, they have landscaping on the site. And under the code that now includes, that also includes um weed mitigation.
Okay, that uh I see no, no reason to duplicate uh conditions. So as long as it's actually going to come up, uh, great. Uh, so that's, that's what I'd suggest.
Okay.
I'd take sixteen, pull sixteen out of it. And what, how do people feel about eight, which is no motorized vehicle rentals except bicycles?
It, um, excuse me, Madam Chair and, and uh Commissioner Best, um, that was one that I was trying to catch as well, as it was discussed. Um, vehicle rentals um would not be, would not be permitted on this property um without a conditional use permit. So again, uh, vehicle rental is not something um that is, that is permit, that is permitted without a CUP.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, Commissioner Best, did you have anything further at this time? And what we're going to do is kind of recycle through the commissioners and on discuss these.
No, I, I think uh I think that's it. I think we've winnowed out the ones that are uh duplicative because they are required. They would be required for CUP or they are required uh in the process, in the engineering process. So I'm happy.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Best. Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to begin by addressing item number one on the current screen shown here. I, I feel like we're really delegating way too much authority to a potential fire chief. Personnel trained and equipped to extinguish fires as approved by the fire chief. Well, if. If I'm the fire chief and I would like to get my off-duty firefighters some extra work, could I say that you've got to be a qualified? You know, past the academy firefighter in order to meet that requirement? While I understand it's important, it's in the owner's best interest to have people that can extinguish fires. And to, to try to place an additional requirement that gives an outside entity that we have absolutely no control or authority over whatsoever. The authority, in, in this case, if the fire chief could come back from Winslow and say, you know what? County planning and, uh, community development, they're not doing that. They didn't train somebody the way I wanted them to train it, so you need to pull their permit. And what could we say? We would have to do that, right? So I, I disagree with this one completely. I think any. Property owner has a, a motivated self-interest to. Make sure, you know, basic firefighting, first aid, those kinds of things that, that helps sustain their property, their people, their, their community. That interest is already there. And if we're gonna extinguish fires, should we add first aid to it? Should we add some other things that, that, that might be handy to have or no? I, I just think this is outside the purview of what a planning and zoning commission should be trying to impose on an applicant for. A, a normal commercial facility. So that would be my thought on, on. Item number one, and I'm not sure the best way to discuss this, Madam Chair, because. E- each of these, I think. We, we almost need to discuss individually and as a committee. So I, 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 or as a commission, excuse me. I, I, you know. The other conditions before these, we, I haven't gotten to yet either. So I don't know the best way to facilitate this discussion. But I, I tend to disagree with an awful lot of this because we're going far beyond the scope of what the planning and zoning commission's role in this. Process is supposed to be, which is to make sure that we're, you know, meeting those three findings, not that we're putting people on notice. You know, we're putting our neighbors, our friends, our community, the people that, that we're here representing. On notice with a statement that, you know, we can pull your CUP if we want to. That's the way it sounds to me. And, and that's just not the way that I, I want to or like to do business. I like to show people respect and I like to show people trust until they prove otherwise. And as we heard from Mr. Short this evening, in this case, there doesn't appear to be any. Black marks against this, this facility at all. Yet, we're trying to impose all these additional requirements on them. None of which we've necessarily seen have any actual benefit, has, you know, have other situations where we have imposed these requirements. Ever been looked back at and said, oh, well, look, it was successful because X didn't happen or X did happen. So I, I have a, I have a fundamental problem, philosophical perhaps, with what we're doing here. And I'm not sure, and, and so I'm gonna toss it back to you and, and say, what's the best way to move forward with this?
Okay, um, thank, thank you for those comments on Commissioner Wilson and. We're actually at the right place to be discussing this because we are in commission discussion, okay? And I had previously, when I, when I left off with Commissioner Best. And I said, okay, go ahead and leave those there, we're gonna let the other commissioners weigh in on this. And that's exactly what you're doing. So it is appropriate for you to go through here. Much like Commissioner Best said, you know, I would like this in here, this in here, so on and so forth. It is your, you know, you are a commissioner and you can go through the suggested list of additional. Conditions.
Okay.
And give your input on them. And after, what I'm gonna do is after you, I'm gonna continue through the list. With Vice Chair Burton, back to Commissioner Ruggles, Williams and so on. And we're gonna discuss these. So go ahead and continue your discussion, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you very much. Item number four, the applicant should consult with the nearby public land managers concerning offsite impacts. Okay, but how will we know what's done? What's the net result of that? What, you know? I'm gonna know. We'll, we'll keep it simple here. Applicant should provide visitors leave no trace materials, having those available in the store, sure, great idea. Handing something to someone every time they, they would come into the store or buy gas or register for an RV spot. We, we haven't said, you know, what the conditions would be for that. I, I don't see value in just arbitrarily handing out things like that. So I'm gonna know. Grassland and forest educational material to increase awareness, again. And unless there's a demonstrated value in this, unless we've seen success somewhere else where it actually has. There, there's a return on that investment, I, I, I can't support it. Maps, there's one, okay, map should be available. As opposed to shall provide, I would say, sure, let's, let's make some maps available in the store or when you register your RV spot. So that people know where they can and, or can and should not go. But, but beyond that, you know, mandatorily having to give people things, to me. There, there's no real value in that because the people that are responsible are going to be responsible, the people that are irresponsible will not be. And the maps won't make any difference. I'm all about number 14, anything we can do to avoid fires is a good idea. So good there. And then, did we want to go back to the other conditions that we're also talking about, Madam Chair, or we? Here right now?
Yeah, no, please go back. I think that you have completed your comments on this list. So now if you could go back on. Mr. Schwartz, could you pull up the, yes, if you could, now, now if you can go through the original ones, well, I'll call them original, but they're the ones that are actually.
In the staff report.
In the staff report, yep.
Item number two. I guess it doesn't hurt to have that in here, but what I would suggest to staff is this ought to be part of any. Approval for a wastewater system that, that reseeding should happen. We shouldn't have to be putting this in here. We know they're gonna have to disturb the ground to put in a wastewater system, and that reseating process ought to be a mandatory part of the permitting done by. The environmental folks. Item number three, any changes to existing outdoor lighting should require a lighting plan. Yep, that, that's according to the zoning code. And it says it right there. And then it says, any new lighting shall be narrow spectrum, which is what the lighting code says. So both of these sentences. Are redundant. They, they don't, they don't add any value here because those requirements already exist. And adding them as a recommendation or a condition of approval here doesn't gain us anything. Changes to signage on the site, same thing. You, you, you have to have a sign permit to change signage. Everyone know. Not everyone, anyone should know that. Staff is certainly at staff meeting, when they have the initial meetings with an applicant, is free to share that with them. But putting these conditions in here, they don't seem to add any value to me. The applicant should be required of public holders, same thing with item number five. And then finally, I promise, item number six shall be improved to a 20-foot wide all-weather surface. I'm guessing Mr. McNeely will tell us that this is part of the environmental or the engineering document that he's been citing a couple of times here. With 14 feet of overhead clearance and supporting a 42,000-pound vehicle, but we, we don't know what the roads currently are. And apparently they've existed and served just fine up to this point. So what new requirement are we putting on them? And what is the, what is the justification for that requirement? With item number six, so that, I guess that should have been a question I had during questions to staff. So, Mr. Well, whoever chooses to answer that, if, if they could, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schwartz, could you address Commissioner Wilson's question on number six? Well, actually, on, an overview of his questions on the other ones as well, if you could, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, so this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. As for number two, that Commissioner Wilson brought up. Currently, it is not a requirement when doing a wastewater system to. Reseed the area with native seeds. I mean, I think this particular applicant is well aware of best practices. And that's something that they would, I would imagine typically do, but it's not something that our environmental quality staff reviews as part of their. Requirements for wastewater systems. As far as condition number three, the first sentence I would agree is somewhat redundant or is redundant for. Requirements of the zoning ordinance, except for that the new. Lighting ordinance that Mr. McNeely has been working on and you've been getting updates from him. As far as we're gonna be making some changes to it to be more consistent with the city of Flagstaff's lighting permit requirements. The second sentence goes a little bit above and beyond what's in the current zoning ordinance for lighting, but is consistent with where we're going. Number four, I would say is redundant, put on notice sort of condition. So I would agree to that. Number six, I think all of the, I guess it's the first and second sentence. Is redundant as far as requirements of the engineering design criteria manual, the EDCM. This last sentence is if the Winslow Fire Department has any additional requirements above. Those that are in our EDCM for them to comply with that.
Zach, this is, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff, so Madam Chair Zach. Actually, item six, the, the exact performance standards of 20-foot wide all-weather surface with a 14-foot. Overhead clearance capable of supporting a 42,000-pound public safety vehicle. That's the performance standard for private roads in the county. And so that, that is actually in the zoning ordinance. Those, that, that exact performance standard is in the zoning ordinance redundantly for, for each zoning district, actually, that if you're, if you're gonna do lot splits. That's the minimum requirement for roads to, to access properties for access. So that is a, a performance standard that exists in the zoning ordinance and we could reference that. However, this is. This is a standard that does not exist in the zoning ordinance for your onsite internal. Drive aisles for your, your circulation on your site. When you get a permit to, to do. Driveways, drive aisles internal to your site, you do have to get a permit through our engineering division. However, that performance standard i- is not required. So when, when sites like this are for RV parks, campgrounds, we know they need to be accessible. By emergency service vehicles everywhere on the site. We, we typically add this requirement to, to the conditions. I hope that helps.
Mr. McNeely, I've got a quick question then. Last month, we approved a, or reviewed and approved a trailer park plan in. Out near Williams and there were roads there that specifically did not meet this criteria, especially the one going to. The laundry room area where there was a potential for fire that I brought up. And, and no one had suggested that that be mandated there. But here we're saying internal, we need a 20-foot wide, and this is a campground, so, you know, let's keep in mind that this isn't a public street or anything else. A, a fire truck can't be any wider than eight and a half feet. And a 20-foot wide surface. Sure, it's, it's an engineering design standard, but why are we imposing this on, on. A, a facility that's not had any problems with this in the past.
Yeah.
That hasn't had, there, there's, to me, there's, there's nothing that demonstrates a need for this.
Absolutely, yeah, concur.
Okay, so we agree. Or I just lost my connection.
We can hear you. We, we can hear you. You did fade out a little bit there, but, but I can hear you now.
Okay. What I, I heard last from Mr. McNeely was, he agreed, is that?
Mr. McNeely, can, would you finish your comment on to Mr. Commissioner Wilson's question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we concur. That's, that, this is a performance standard that goes for roads. It has been applied to some projects. This is already a developed project. I, I kind of caught that by add, I mean, we're adding conditions to a project that is already developed. Been developed for decades. So I, I'm not, I'm not crazy about that idea either, but, but I understood there was gonna be a push by commissioners to. To get this consistent with. With other new projects. So, yeah, we're, we're definitely trying to maintain some consistency. You know, the, the fire chief, and we have different fire chiefs throughout the, throughout the. County is, is probably gonna have some opinion about providing service to the site, and, and I'm sure already, already does. So, yeah, I would concur that the 20-foot wide is, is, is probably not necessary. And being this is already developed, this, I'm not crazy about the idea of this, of this condition when the site's already developed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Wilson, we're still at you at commission discussion level.
I, I appreciate everyone's patience, I'm not gonna test it anymore, thank you.
Okay, no, you're, you're fine. All right. And I will just say on, Mr. Schwartz, you can un-highlight number eight. Because I, I did say previously that I pick my battles very carefully and I. You know, this is in lieu of. You know, a perpetual. He's, there, the applicant is getting a perpetual timeframe. And I, I do understand what you're saying, so I'm gonna let that one go. Vice Chair Burton?
Um, yeah. With regards to number six, I. Think that we should leave in that last sentence, just for any future improvements that they may do. I think it's something that should be at least reviewed. By the fire chief. But, yeah, I don't think we need to have the other part, just that last sentence. Because then it's not imposing any undue hardship or anything on an existing infrastructure. As far as all of the other. Normal. Conditions we apply to campgrounds. I, I am happy to go with whatever the majority of the commission wants to do. I kind of, kind of am of the mind that. This is such a, this is a very well-established location. They've been around forever, they're not in a high tourist area. They're really gonna be more of, we're stopping up, we're stopping overnight on our way through. Kind of situation. You know, maybe going to see the, the meteor crater, but I, I kind of don't know that any of this is really necessary. Except for maybe some of the fire related, like number 14. I'm not sure how necessary it is, given that it's such an established and such an isolated. Location that is just, I mean, it's right off the highway. So, I don't know, but I will defer to whatever the rest of the commission. Prefers. So those are my comments.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Burton. This is Chair Taveras, and I'm gonna start. With the recommended conditions of approval that are in the staff report, that would be specifically items number one through eight. I do, I agree, I, I personally, I think that Vice Chair Burton's suggestion on number six is sufficient. And I think the others, and I'm even taking that off, even Mr. McNeely, wait. And I think the others, and I'm even taking that off, even Mr. McNeely weighed in on that. So I am good removing all of that. And I have no problem leaving the, the last sentence in specifically all improvements to the access required by the Winslow Fire Department shall be approved by the fire chief. Okay, so can you put up on the suggested ones by Commissioner Best, please? Okay, um, number one. My take on that. You know, if, I'm going to start by saying if, and actually this kind of goes back to why I originally said, gave my comments on number eight. If this were a new project, it would be one thing, but they've been there forever. And I personally, because they are so established. If they would have come in on time, if this would not have lapsed, if this conditional use permit would not have lapsed, I give you that's a hypothetical because it did. We wouldn't even be talking about this. Which tells me that there probably was no need for it. So where I'm at is I do think that number fourteen, I do agree that number fourteen should stay. I think we all agree on fire danger. But like I said, had this not lapsed, the other ones would not be there, which tells me that they probably don't need to be there. So I'm a no on one, four, five, six, seven. I'll leave fourteen. And again, on eight, just because they've been there so long, I wouldn't have put that in there. But again, that's the last time I'll say anything about number eight. Okay, so there, um, there are my comments. Now we're going to go, we're going to come back through Commissioner Ruggles. And we can go through this, we, we can keep going, you know, we're going to, we're going to discuss this. So Commissioner Ruggles, you're up. Commissioner Ruggles, I think you're muted though.
Sorry, I thought I got.
There you go.
I'm back.
Okay, we can hear you now. Go ahead, Commissioner Ruggles. Thank you.
I have to say that I will agree with Chair Ontiveras on all of her comments relative to what we see on the screen with one exception. And that is the wording in number fourteen. Fire danger level consistent with local national forest. Do you realize how far away from any national forest this is? Well, that being said, the national forests, BLM, land that is tribal land all have different requirements. So being alert to fire danger and the surrounding environment is about the best you can do. If you say consistent with a local national forest, it doesn't necessarily make sense to say, well, because Coconino National Forest is at level three, that it should be level three there. And you have to consider the fact that Northern Arizona is a whole series of microclimates, very much like it is on a smaller scale within the immediate Flagstaff area. So I'm, I'm in agreement with the signage to alert campers about fire danger, but saying it's consistent with local national forest doesn't make sense.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Ruggles, this is Chair Ontiveras. That is a very good point and one that completely, I completely overlooked. What, let's look at what, what verbiage would you suggest?
Well, I'm not too good at coming up with this on an ad hoc basis. I've stated my opinion, but coming up with appropriate wordage on such short notice, a little difficult. I would just say campers have seasonal fire danger. Without stating consistent with local national forest. Perhaps. I'd certainly welcome the comments on that from the rest of the commission, however.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was going to say, as far as the, could we see the rest of the, the other conditions? Cause I can't, I've got those on my computer, but the screen isn't very big, so.
Hey, Commissioner Ruggles, and, and before you, before you leave that one, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. I, I think what might help with the referencing the national forest for the fire restrictions is the county does, the county does fire restrictions. Typically just consist, consistent with, with national forest. So that could, that signage shall be installed to alert campers of the fire danger level and fire restrictions established by the county. So the, the county does it countywide for this reason, to apply to private property. So I, I think that really would be the more appropriate, the more appropriate fire restrictions is, is, and, and the county, obviously, they, they go with a restrictive one. You know, so this, this may be very far away from where there are issues in the peaks. However, the, the county fire restrictions do apply to the entire county. So onto the
That is absolutely the best way.
It would apply anyways, but the restrictions would apply anyways. This condition would require a sign.
Yeah, we're just asking for signs there and that.
Exactly.
I think that is wholly appropriate to make them consistent with county fire level restrictions or fire restrictions consistent with the county. So that, that really does it well. But
Yeah.
Let's move on to the rest.
Yeah, that was good wordsmithing, Mr. McNeely. Thank you. Um, all right, Commissioner Ruggles, do you have anything additional before I move to Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's go back to the conditions as proposed by staff. I, I've got two things. One, I need to comment on condition number no, not two, but condition number three. The second sentence, as it currently exists, the lighting ordinance, section four, three, does not make a requirement for narrow spectrum filtered or phosphor converted amber LED lighting. Fully shielded, yes, there is a requirement. But the other part of it is that right now, such a condition does not exist, and I know that's coming up. However, I would be a strong advocate for what is currently in condition number three, second sentence. So I think that should remain, they'll be consistent with the upcoming changes in the ordinance. And I've got a pretty good idea what those are going to be, and this would be consistent with those. So leave that there. Six. I think that I have to agree with our chair and our vice chair on leaving the last sentence in there. And one other comment that relates to this, I think after being out at the site and taking a good thorough look at the onsite vegetation and conditions that really, really adding the requirement about the proposed first requirement in additional conditions i- is going to be unnecessary. I think conditions are pretty limited wherein you could have an extremely destructive fire onsite. The site is not cramped at all. RVs are, have a lot more room than a lot of current RV parks. So I think I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Ruggles. I'm going to go ahead and move on to Commissioner Williams, but if you do have further thoughts, we are, we're going to, we're going to get this discussed. So Commissioner Williams, your thoughts, please?
Um, okay, so starting with the conditions. I agree the last sentence of number six, keep that and get rid of everything else. I think that was kind of the only one there. And then for the campground ones that we have been discussing. I would say, yes, I like the new wording on number fourteen. I think all the other ones can go away. Yeah, I think there could be some merit to number seven, but it's not a deal breaker for me. But I do think this would be an interesting thing to have for our retreat, to discuss some of these things, so. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And Commissioner Williams, I was thinking the exact same thing. And I think that maybe when Commissioner Wilson said, you know, maybe, maybe there's philosophical differences here. I think a retreat, we're doing a good job here tonight. Okay, we're working through this. But I think at a retreat, I think that this would be something useful. So, on, Mr. McNeely, could you please put that on the list? So.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Okay, and Commissioner Best, we're back at you now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I agree with the last, keep the last sentence in six. Number fourteen, I wonder whether Coconino County or Winslow has the best information. And we could leave it open as far as I'm concerned. We could say level, level, fire danger level as advised by Winslow Fire Department. Or fire danger level as advised by appropriate authorities. I, I'm not quite sure whether the environment out there is closer to Winslow or closer to Flagstaff, but I think it's closer to Winslow in, in its ecology. The reason that I would go with number one on the campground list is that and that's why I asked the question. I haven't been out there lately, but you know, response time from Winslow is going to be half an hour. If you get a grass fire going, you've got minutes to extinguish it before it takes off, you know, with a, a typical thirty mile, mile an hour wind in May. And so I I'm unsure about that one. If there's no fuel there, then yeah, no, no problem. But if there's fuel that could get away in a high wind day and start sweeping across the land, then we need, in my opinion, and, and my vision of that would be some sort of an OHV with some water tanks and somebody who knows how to use it. So you could stop a fire before it becomes unstoppable. As, as far as, you know, my vision of this, of, of all this educational material is not to go out there and see a bunch of paper on the ground where people have been handed a piece of paper and said, oh yeah, throw it on the ground. My vision is a, a wall somewhere with some educational posters. And you know, my philosophy is one hundred and eighty degrees, I think from Commissioner Wilson. I, I, I feel that conditions are a way that we're communicating and educating our folks who are operating in our community. Both the person with the app, with the application and then possibly a subsequent person who buys the property and kind of starts over again, learning what to do. I would simply point out that we just lost Grand Falls, a treasure. We lost access to it because we're not educating people well enough. To me, that means let's try to educate people. These folks are making money providing overnight stays. And to me, it's, it's not negative. It's positive. They are teaching people both to respect the land. And they're enhancing the experience of people who are being educated. You know, people go on tours to be educated. And so we are just providing educational elements that work both ways. They protect the land and they give the people a better experience. One thing that we haven't ever talked about, and it'd be fun to talk about this at the retreat, is how to deal with the, the tribal issue, the fact that people are in a tribal area. And I, I know a lot of people are working on that right now. The, the Flagstaff now has a statement that they make before meetings about tribal heritage in this area. We have two supervisors who are tribal members. So it, it would be an interesting thing to think about how is there any educational component that we would want to do related to, to proximity to tribal areas? I think that's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. What I'm going to do is I want to ask you a question on number one here, okay, on your proposed ones.
Okay.
Because I understand what Commissioner Wilson is saying. We've talked many times about turnover. There can be turnover in fire departments. There is turnover in fire departments. There is turnover in fire chiefs. And I understand what he was talking about, about passing this on to a third entity. So my question to you is how about if it said, the facility shall be staffed at all times by personnel trained and equipped to extinguish fires, period?
You know, I, I'd be okay with that, but I I don't, I trust our local fire folks. I mean, we deal with them all the time. I don't notice any crazies out there abusing their position in the way that was described. But I, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I was just trying to.
Who is going to, so what does that mean? Does that mean somebody with a five pound fire extinguisher? In other words, I would, I would want somebody to, as I said, in this situation, what I would be looking for would be stopping a grass fire before it becomes a wind blown fire that everybody just says, get out of the way. Because that can happen very quickly. As we all know, I mean, we know lots about fires because we've had plenty of them. So who's, who's going to? You know, we're not going back. There's no, this is perpetual. So who's going to make that call?
Yeah, okay, you know, okay, so, so on that, I think I'm, I'm going to stick with my no. I, you know, I mean, we're, we're voting here and on there, it's, it's Ontivera's no, and it's going to go back to where I was at that, that in, and I'm specifically talking about this case, not campgrounds as a whole. Because I think that we do need to be cognizant of the conditions that we are applying to the specific case that is in front of them and they, in front of us, excuse me. And they need to be tailor made to that. So I'm just going to go back to if this would not have expired, we wouldn't even be talking about this. So I'm going to go on a number fourteen. I'm going to give my final comments here. A number fourteen. Uh. I like it the way, I like it the way it was, because Coconino County is the one that issues these. So I'm, I'm gonna leave it with the way it was after, uh, Commissioner Ruggles reworded it. Um, and can you go back to number, the original ones, Mr. Schwartz? And I just want to say that on number three. Um, I am okay with leaving that second sentence in there, because this is, the lighting ordinance is a bit, well, it is fluid. And I don't have a problem with the second sentence in number three. So that's gonna conclude my comments, so I did go out of order. Uh, Commissioner Wilson, we are back to you now.
Um, just a quick comment then on, um, let's go back to the campground section there.
The original ones or the?
Yeah, that one, um, right here, Commissioner Best, you and I are a hundred and eighty degrees actually in, in phase with each other. I too would love to see everyone be much more responsible stewards of our public lands and private lands. Um, and. I, I just want to do things that actually work, that actually, um, have, have demonstrated that, I don't want to, to spend time, effort, resources, materials, whatever. Doing things that, that we, we can't demonstrate actually accomplish our goals. On item number one, um, y- your discussion about, you know, how are they going to be equipped and, and so on? The tunnel fire had a, you know, a, a hotshot crew, the, the, the best trained possible firefighters there. That morning on April nineteenth of last year. On scene, there were six of them, along with their equipment. And they had absolutely nothing, no way to control that fire. And it was a small, at that point, less than one acre, so, you know, it, that's what you're describing, and if a hotshot crew can't do it. It's absolutely unreasonable for us to expect. Um, a private entity to have their own personal fire department ready to do that, unfortunately. Fires are a, um. And, well, one, they're necessary, and, and two, there, there are things that we can't control, mother nature demonstrates routinely. Um, how little control we actually have. Um, and then, um, on number fourteen on this page. I know, um, Winslow may or may not do fire assessments, but I know Summit Fire does, and Summit Fire is closer. Than either Cocino National Forest or, um, Flag Fire. And so, keeping this ambiguous and, and saying, you know, the, the, the local fire. Um, whatever the local fire danger level is. And, and let them decide what best reflects that danger in, you know, in, in this remote location. Would, uh, uh, that's good for me, and that's all my comments.
Okay, so Commissioner Wilson, just to drill down on this, what would you have number fourteen say?
I, I, I wouldn't specify whose fire danger level we're using, I would leave that up to them to decide. You know, whatever the current fire danger is, should be reflected on a sign there. And let them determine, you know, gosh, has it been, you know, really wet out here east of Flag lately? Or has it been super dry compared to Flag lately? Or Winslow? Um, let, let's just let them post a sign saying, this is the current fire danger level. And, and we don't have to tell them where they get that information from, they can make that decision better than we can here.
Okay, so you're saying, put a period afterward, after the word level, okay, yeah, okay, thank you, Commissioner, or Mr. Schwartz, okay. Got it, okay, so, on. I believe. I believe we're at the end of this, so Mr. Schwartz, if you could please put up the, the conditions in the staff report?
Madam Chair, would you like me to try to pull some of these into the staff report or wait for that?
Yeah, we're gonna do that in just a minute.
Okay.
Uh, let's look at the original eight, okay? Okay, so let's look at number one, um. Everyone, okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm going to look for hands. If you don't like the conditions as we go through, raise your hand, I am good with number one. I'm good with number two, okay, keep scrolling through, um, number three. Number four, number five, I am with the modification to number six, I'm good there, okay, hold on, Commissioner Wilson? Uh, you're, I think you're muted.
Sorry about, I, I just apologized to myself while I was still muted, sorry about that, um, item number four there, please. Any changes to the, the sign will require a sign permit, of course it does, do we really need to put that in here? You know, again, this is, th- this is a renewal. This isn't, and, and, and I'm sorry, that's kind of administrative at this point, but.
Uh, let's see, on number four, okay, hold on, I've got a, um, I'm toggling between screens here, um. I have no problem with number four being removed. Um, but I want, if any of the commissioners have a problem with number four being removed, would you please raise your hand so I can see it? Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
Um, I would simply have to say that that is informative, more than anything else. Have you ever heard somebody say, ignorance of the law is no excuse? And, um, the other thing is, I'm all too aware of how often. That occurs, especially with something like zoning, I don't think it's an insult to anybody. Uh, it, it's, it's just informative, period.
Okay, on, honestly, I'm, I'm neutral on it, you know, it could stay or it could go, I'm very neutral on that. On. Commissioner Will, uh, Commissioner Best?
I agree with Commissioner Ruggles, I, I'm looking down the road, this is sold. Uh. Somebody finds some, something called a conditional use permit in the cabinet, oh, gosh, look at all this information. Uh, this is, this is a forever document, we're not gonna see this again. I, I don't, I, I'm fine with lots of conditions. Uh, that's just a different philosophy, so, there it is.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, um, Commissioner Wilson, your hand is still raised and you are unmuted.
I, I just wanted to reply to, um, Commissioner Ruggles. We would need to draw a line someplace, if all this document or all these conditions are gonna be is informational. Because there's a whole lot of information that the zoning code contains that we could include in this document. And, I, I think we, obviously another discussion point for a, a future retreat, but. Putting informational things in here as conditions, uh, to me, doesn't make any sense, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson, um, I know that everyone, okay, Commissioner, uh. Just to recap, Commissioner Wilson would like it removed, Commissioner Ruggles and Commissioner Best would like it to stay for informational. Honestly, I'm neutral on this one, so, it could stay or go. Uh, number five, I am good with number five, I'm not seeing hands raised. Number six, with the modification, number seven. Looks good, number eight, looks good, okay, now let's bump to the proposed ones. Okay, and if I'm understanding everything correctly, we're removing everything except number fourteen. That's going to say signage shall be installed, this is what we need to agree on as a commission, what verbiage do we want in number fourteen? So let me get back to my participant list. Do we want it to say signage shall be, hold on, signage shall be installed to alert campers of the fire danger level, period? Or do we want it to say signage shall be installed to alert campers of the fire danger, danger level? And fire restrictions consistent with Coconino County? So, um, if you want number, if you want it to end after. Okay, right now, signage shall be installed, okay, Commissioner Williams?
Um, how about if we say signage shall be, we install to alert campers, campers of the local fire danger level? And then they can determine whether they wanna follow Coconino County or Winslow or. Look outside and have a good idea of.
Mm-hmm.
What it is?
Okay, I, I personally, I personally like Commissioner Williams', um, suggestion here. And then it would end after the word level, there would be a period there. So, Mr. Schwartz, it would say signage shall be installed to alert campers of the local fire danger level, period, okay? So, that looks to be okay, nobody is raising their hand in opposition, so that's what it is. So now if you can take number fourteen and put that, make that number nine. In the ones on the staff report, I think we're ready to move for it to a motion in second, please.
Bear with me, Madam Chair, sorry.
Oh, no, you're, you're. Fine. I think we're more concerned about accuracy than speed, so you're, you're good, Mr. Schwartz. Commissioner Williams, your hand is still raised, did you have anything else, I didn't want to cut you off? No, okay.
Madam Chair, I think, I think I've completed the changes, but if you want to confirm.
Yeah, let's do that, go back up to number one, please, and then just slowly scroll. But I think you, I think everything looks good. Okay, keep going. Keep going. Okay, I think we've got it, I think that's it right there, okay, Commissioner Wilson, I see your hand raised.
On three, didn't we say we're gonna remove that first sentence?
Um, you know what, I don't know if we agreed on that one or not, on.
I may have misunderstood, I apologize.
Yeah, I think, I think that may be one that, that's.
We're, we're just.
The other ones you're thinking, yeah, is, is informational. On, and these are gonna be good, you got some really good topic, uh, retreat topics, Mr. McNeely. Um, Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, I hope I didn't cause any, uh, any confusion on anyone's part by, uh. Uh, stating, uh, the fact of the matter about the second sentence. Um, I didn't have anything to say about the first sentence at all. Um, but, uh. The second sentence, perhaps, uh, my comments on that might have led to a little bit of uncertainty or confusion, I hope not.
Okay, I, I think, I think probably for this discussion, um, I think probably leave. Let's leave three where it is, let's leave four where it is. And, uh. I think that we're good. I'm reading through this, I think that we're good. Um, I'm not seeing any hands raised indicating that there, anyone else has concerns, so with this, let's move to a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I will go forward with the motion. If you would like.
Yes, please, yeah, please, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, um, make a motion to approve CUP twenty-three dash zero zero five. Uh, with conditions as stated by staff.
One second.
Okay, was that, uh, okay, that was, was that you, Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
A point of.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Commissioner Williams. For approval of CUP two-three dash zero zero five with conditions as modified. All in favor, please say aye, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Ontiveras, and I also vote aye, the motion passes unanimously. And the final item on the agenda this evening is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? Okay, we have Mr. Doug Meyer, Mr. Meyer, please state your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
Uh, excuse me, hi, my name is Doug Meyer, eighty-eight, ten Stardust Trail in Donny Park. And my comment is concerning an item in today's work session agenda, namely. The Community Development Department update, point number four on page four. My comment is as follows. On January nineteenth, the DPTF Area Plan Committee met for the forty-fifth time. Over the last three plus years at a recorded public meeting. At that meeting, the committee approved an amendment to its area plan. Which the DPTF community now fully expects to be included in its newly completed plan. Since the committee approved similar language at at least four separate DPTF planning committee meetings over the last year. The amended statement in the plan's vision is simply this. The transfer of any land currently under the jurisdiction of this document. To any entity not required to comply with it is contrary to the expressed will of the residents. And is not supported by this document. The meaning of this statement is intended to be interpreted by the county supervisors in a political context only. County staff, staff are not required to assist the supervisors in understanding it. The community is comfortable with the wording, and we know that in the context of a future land transfer. The supervisors will clearly understand our meaning. The fight over this amendment is entirely a political battle. Because an area plan carries no legal obligations upon Coconino County or its supervisors. Ownership of the area plan belongs solely to the community that authored it. County staff has no standing to have the last word here. This is a stunning power grab, which makes a mockery of the entire community-driven planning process. I'm here today to advocate that this political battle be fought out in the open. In the light of public meetings, where all of the, of the participants' actions will be recorded as a matter of public record. This amendment must move forward to protect the integrity of the public planning process. And that may require several P and Z commissioners to stand up for what's right. And make sure this gets on your agenda. And thanks very much for your time, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, for your comments this evening, thank you for participating in the county planning and zoning process. I've seen no one else that wishes to address the commission this evening. My clock shows eight fifty-three PM, and the meeting is adjourned, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, everyone, thanks.
Hope it doesn't snow.
Madam Chair, great job this evening, that was a tough meeting, and I, I appreciate your leadership here.